Howdy, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. Today is Tuesday, October 26, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. After the executive session adjourns, I will come back out and open the regular, or the work session, and we expect that to be somewhere around 5:15 PM. Thank you very much for your participation. Howdy again. It is 6:35. We have adjourned from executive session, and we are moving into work session in the conference room behind the council chambers. The public is invited to attend. Thank you.
Exactly. They get a notice and say, so-and-so's about to do this. I better go down there.
The time's 6:37. We're moving into work session. I'd like to, uh, a, uh... I'd like the concurrence of the council to reorganize our work session agenda a bit. We've got three items that we need to get through before we go into regular session. I'd like to move items C and Z to the end, and handle items A, B, and E first. If that's okay with everybody? All right. Thank you very much. Item A is a discussion on agenda items. Anybody have anything? Questions, comments?
I was gonna say, we received some questions today. I know we have a full presentation on the TBI, but on the, uh...
USIC.
Yes, if we could, Kent, or... I'm sorry, I jumped in there. I just know they got a question today, so, uh... Mayor, is that okay?
Oh, did you say TBI?
There's a full presentation on TBI, but there, on the consent agenda, is the, uh...
USIC.
USIC, right. We got a question on the day, so if it's okay, Kent can talk about that. Just bring everybody up to speed. So, I'll just stand here, 'cause I'm...
You can, you can sit around if you want.
So, the item is, uh, it's a contract for locating services. So, we, we, we contract out to USIC. We used to provide locates as a staff service, but it became really cumbersome, given the number of locates. This goes back to a state law where there's a central location. If you're gonna be digging any more than 16 inches below ground, you have to call the 18, 1, uh...
811.
811, Texas Dig. And we're part of that program. So, it's a one-stop call for any line locates. A few years ago, we decided to go to a contract because it was really weighing on our staff time, just going around. We were just constantly doing line locates. So, that's what this contract is. It is a renewal. They went up 3% from last year, cost-wise. You know, we, so, you may be thinking, well, this is just the right-of-way. This is contractors. It is largely contractors, but a lot of these contractors are working for businesses and residents in the city. So, when we went to, I guess, we've always thought of it as a service to people who are already here, for the most part. Some of the line locates are tied to our projects. So, if we were to, for example, charge the contractor, we basically would be backcharged, right? We would charge them, and they would charge us back for that, for that locate service. So, really, the contractors that fall outside that kind of bounds. Not a resident, not a business in Capella, not one of our projects. Maybe these companies that come through and just use our right-of-way, like a telecommunications company, these fiber companies. We just never thought about charging back to them. So, the question was, was really related to why are we covering that cost? And so, for the most part, these locates are a service to residents, businesses, or their art projects. The others are, you know, we could tie it to a right-of-way permit. I'm not exactly sure how we would figure out what to charge them. So, for example, August, we had about 600 locates. 200 of those were residential. So, it's kind of a hodgepodge, but we do a lot of locates. This seems to be the best way to handle it through a contract. So, I don't know if there was anything else.
Sorry. So, the reason why I had to ask is, I wasn't sure if that's just the norm of other cities that actually, the city eats up that cost, because it didn't make... I mean, if you say that it's for the, it's for the city contract, I understand that part. It's just that I thought if that was actually individual contractors for, whether it be a business or owner, business owners or residential, the whole city, you know, covering that cost just didn't make sense. That's why I asked, you know, what was the purpose of the city covering that cost?
Right. And we, yeah, we've just always seen it as a service to those requests. If they're doing business here, they're trying to develop here, or they're whatever, trying to build a pool, connect to a water mine for their residents, for whatever reason, it's really just a service for those residents. They're required to call a locate, and so we just provide that service to locate our utilities.
Well, you know, individual cost is not substantial, but when you put it all together, we're talking 85,000 something, and that was, that was the reason why I asked about that.
The only thing, the only thing I would add to that conversation is, if that is something that, so like during the budget process, if that is something that you would like to, you would like to see us change how we do that, we, we talked to you about our credit card fees. We were eating, and it was a significant amount, or we were eating credit card fees, and we passed that on, and we, we get a few complaints. But if that's something that the council tells us, hey, you know what? We wanna go ahead and recoup that cost. We could do it for right-of-way permits, potentially. We'd have to figure out exactly what that looks like. It wouldn't cover the full 85,000, but it would cover some portion.
But you're saying the majority of it is actually the city's project, and that's the reason why they're actually doing the...
Yes.
Okay.
So, like, you know, as we start Beltline, they're getting locate requests all over, up and down, and we go out and, you know, USIC will go locate all of our utilities, water, sewer, fiber, all that stuff, so...
But if it is something that y'all have an interest in, just let us know. And let's not wait till May, so that we can figure out how that might work. Thanks. Good questions. Anybody else? Was that a, was that a handoff or just... Let's move on to item B, discussion regarding appointments to boards and commissions.
Dissonance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, to let you know, we have concluded boards and commissions interviews. Thank you all very much for your time and energy, and that I know that it's a, it's a long process. So, thank you very much. We've compiled a list of, it's, this is a draft list, obviously, but we've compiled a list of all the appointments that you have recommended to us. And so, I just need direction on particularly two boards, but I do need you to review this to make sure that these all line up with how you remember the mayor. So, in particular, if you wanna, obviously, please review this, but I need direction on the library board, some appointees. There was left, some, I did not have resolution on two appointees. And I list exactly the membership spots that are needed with the two names that were recommended, just a spot was not given to us.
So, can I rephrase that?
Yeah. Go for it.
So, we need to decide whether Carly or...
Harada's.
Harada is the regular or alternate member?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Bijou, that was you and Brianna?
Yeah, I think me and Brianna, we were gonna talk about that, who we're gonna fill in. We haven't had that discussion yet.
Well, we do still have time. I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's fine. So, we have until the first meeting in November. If you can, you and Brianna can get together and resolve that prior to the meeting. Actually, this is as smooth as this session's gone in a long time. Just for your reference, usually, we have to do a little trading between the different committees when we come up short on one committee or have too many qualified people on another. And this allows us to adjust the membership of the committee so that we have qualified people in all of our positions. So, kudos to you guys that spent many, many, many hours interviewing.
And so, the next one is actually the Board of Adjustment. We were given two regular members, but then we were notified by the liaison for the Ford Task Force that one of her members, she appointed a member that was a, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. She appointed a member that was, I'll let you handle that. You, you understand exactly what I'm trying to say.
So, someone who is currently serving on the Board of Adjustment is being accepted to the Ford Board?
That is correct.
Okay. So, that is gonna open up a third slot for a regular member?
Yes.
And we still have the two alternate members?
That is correct.
So, who's moving over to Ford Board?
It's Kimberly Grove.
That is correct.
I don't see her listed here.
On...
On the Ford Board.
On the Ford Board.
She's actually...
No, in the first page.
Yeah, on the...
First page.
There you go. Yeah.
Okay. So, she was on the Board of Adjustment?
That is correct.
She currently is.
And she's moving over to the Ford?
Yes.
And so, you need direction on...
Who was gonna...
I, I'm not...
We're good.
That's great. That's great.
So, what is, what is, what is the direction?
So, we're gonna go ahead and move Kyle as the regular member?
Okay.
Bringing Kenneth as the alternate.
Okay.
So, Kyle Rogers?
Kyle Rogers.
So, we'll move into a regular member?
Kenneth Cole.
And Kenneth will be the alternate.
Oh, I, so what was it showing was Kimberly was not up for reappointment. That was what was considered.
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
She's already served one year, so she's on that off cycle.
And so, that is, Kenneth Cole will be filling the unexpired term of...
Uh, no?
No. Kyle Rogers.
I'm so sorry. I've gotten names mixed up.
So, so Kyle, Kyle will move up to the regular member?
For the unexpired term.
For the unexpired term of Kimberly Grove, and Kenneth Cole will move into Kyle Rogers as an alternate?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
A full two-year term. Yes.
Bijou?
Yeah. Actually, do you have any questions for us?
No, sir. I'm definitely...
I have a question for...
Okay.
Kevin and I had an interview with our annual service advisory board.
Okay.
We had some discussion about adding additional board members to that board. What's the process for adding more members?
Absolutely. So, we would just need to amend that ordinance that instated the animal services board. So, currently, that would just go through the process of amending an ordinance through you all. We would just need direction on exactly what you wanted to change.
How many more people that we would like to add?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
If I, if I...
Go ahead, please. In our interviews, we, what we found is that we've got a lot of passionate people that are, that wanna be involved in animal services, but obviously, there's basically, you know, we have the one slot for a citizen and then the one alternate. So, I know that there's been, they've had some internal discussion about creating a nonprofit to support the animal services and stuff. But Bijou and I, I think we're really moved by just the passion of people to interview. So, and I appreciate you bringing up the question. So, that's kind of what we wanted to talk to the council about, was if we could look at maybe amending that. And our, our big question was, could we just add one spot? Or does it have to be two spots to make sure that we, it has to be two to make sure we keep our voting?
It doesn't have to be.
But to keep the voting...
But to keep it odd, you'd wanna, you'd wanna add two.
Bob has some things he would like to say.
Well, the animal services, kind of where the state law requires you have a vet, an animal rights activist, and a staff member from the, our animal shelter. And the reason for that is their opinion counts more than other people because of the expertise in those fields. So, you gotta be careful that you're not gonna backload that particular district because of the importance of those three people. I don't have any problem putting people on because they won't participate, but their participation statistically is more important than just our citizens. Not, more important in the eyes of the law, not more important in community.
So, do, do we designate that this person is for the veterinarian position?
Yes, sir. So...
Okay.
Yes.
Kevin?
And that was one thing I wanted to clarify, is the, the staff member is a voting member of that board?
The way that the ordinance reads, yes, sir.
Okay, perfectly. And that's what we were just, we weren't 100% sure on that. So, that's why the question was one or two.
There are no other boards that have employees on, except for that one, which is state law requirement.
Yes.
So, I guess our, our next question would be is how do we move that process forward if we wanted to add two people to support that board?
Can we bring that back specifically before the...
If y'all have an agreement right here, as you're talking about it, we can work with Bob and Ashley, and we'll bring it forward.
And then, once you pass it, then that creates the vacancies, once it's effective, and then you can point someone the same way you choose.
To do that by our own process requires a majority vote of the body. So, who's in favor of hearing that as an amendment?
Before we take a vote, I just wanna update the entire council that those members are also talking about creating a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization to supplement decision-making or recommendations. So, that's also out there. They are trying to create that. So, just to, just for informational purposes, I'm in favor of adding more members.
Kevin, I assume you are?
I'd like to.
Anybody else? Okay, we got a majority. So, there you go.
We have consensus.
Yeah.
We have a consensus. I'm sorry. Majority vote.
And so, to be clear, you do want to do this before we make all appointments?
Because it would be, it would be on the November agenda.
And we actually, based on interviews, we actually already identified the two people that would be, that we would like to fill in.
You could bring them that 30 minutes.
We ranked them, and we sent the list to give to Sarah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
But we just wanted to obviously get with this board first and just make sure that was cool. So, thank you, guys.
So, they have to vote on it?
Exactly.
Just have a question for Bob. So, I know you said that the expert, their opinion counts more, right? But if we add the board, and if there was a vote, what happens if there were votes?
Well, you, you want to not create a board larger than five so that the, quote, experts would always have the majority. If they're making decisions like they're supposed to be, for animal welfare, that's the whole purpose of having that group of people available to make those decisions. You probably wouldn't wanna create a board where they're diluted, and then board members do something that the vet, the animal rights activist, children, people think is a bad idea.
But is that gonna be...
If, if they increase it, what is it now?
Three.
Three. It's just those three. We can increase it ten more and I would...
You did enough. That's affirmative, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Did you need this guy?
Yes, please. Thank you. I appreciate that. Unless you've made recipe notes or something, I don't know.
It's not the same as economic development. You can keep it.
It is a draft, so obviously, you'll get the real one.
All right. Item E is receive an update on the draft social media policy.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you so, so much for your patience for having me back to talk with you this evening. So, after our last discussion, I made some changes to our social media policy. I proposed social media policy for elected and appointed officials at council's direction and based upon council's comments. So, I'll actually go over those changes when I present in the, the regular council meeting, but the red line version is in your packet. There is one change that I wanted to point out in particular that is not included on the version in your packet. In the, the first paragraph...
Did y'all get the red outline version?
I did not get the red version either.
The red line version is not in your packet. But I will be, I will be going over all of the changes, so I will give you an overview. But there is, there is one change that I did wanna point out in particular that was not in the version that you saw last time. In the, the first paragraph of the document, the last line of it reads that, requires that the content of any postings on these sites not be in violation of existing city laws, policies, directives, rules, or regulations. We have taken out directives from that paragraph. And that is the only change that you have not seen on some agenda, but not this one. But I will go over the remainder of the changes in our, our discussion. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the policy if you had a chance to look at, look at the red line in the previous agenda, or if you just have any other questions. Be happy to answer those.
John?
So, not about the policy, but I think last time, the very, first time when you initially reported this, you said, I remember, you said 37 cities were surveyed. Only eight responded. Of those, only four that actually had a, something similar in existence. Is that still the same as of today?
So, I'm actually very glad that you asked that. It is not quite the same. So, I don't remember the exact numbers, so please forgive me on that, but it was approximately 35 cities that we sent out a survey to. I did only hear back from a handful, and only a few of those, as you mentioned, indicated that they had a policy in place. However, we have been doing some research on the backend and going through code of ordinances for other cities and handbooks for other cities. And we do have a list of a few cities around, around Capella and in Texas that have policies. So, that includes CISD. It does follow the Texas Association of School Board guidelines. Benbrook has a policy, Cedar Hill, Richardson, Flugerville, Leander, and Dallas. And there likely are other cities that have policies or that are looking into pursuing policies, but we just haven't been able to find them or to get that information from them.
Was that all CISD, or was, was the city itself?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so CISD follows a policy, but as well as CISD, the city of Benbrook, Cedar Hill, Richardson, Flugerville, Leander, and Dallas have policies in place.
Can you help me, or can you just help clarify? And I don't know if this is more also a legal thing, but the way this guidance or policy reads, is this entire document all policy that can be violated? Or is part of it policy that can be violated, and part of it is just guidelines and best practices? Or, and the reason, I'll give you a little bit of sort of background on why I'm asking is, if someone else picks this up that hadn't been looking at it, you know, for three or four months, and just looks at it, do they just assume all of this, I can get in trouble for any of this? Or, or, and it's not even an ordinance, right? So, it's not, it, it just falls under that one, I don't know, 113.7 or whatever, that, the part of... The Code of Conduct, right? So, it doesn't have specific penalties for violating it? So, I'm sort of rambling here, but my question is, is it all, is it all policy? Or is only part of it policy, and part of it is best, best practices? Or sort of, what's, how would you describe that?
So, so, yeah, the way that the policy, the policy is currently written, the document is currently written, is it does include a section that is professional and personal conduct standards. So, those are the things like required to conduct themselves in a manner consistent with the city's policies and standards of conduct, be accurate and honest when posting information, and things like that. Those are really the only things that say required or have any of that kind of firmer language. And then, the remainder of it is best practices and light, and guidelines, which are strongly recommended. But there are, one of the changes that you'll see in my upcoming presentation is that there is a section on enforcement listed in the updated version of the policy. And so, the enforcement section is tied to our code of ordinances, which does outline a procedure for filing a complaint, and then what happens when that, once that complaint is filed.
So, I guess, sort of follow-up. So, what can, what can be enforced, just that front section that's the, I think you said, professional and personal conduct standards? Is that the only thing that, I don't wanna use the phrase "get in trouble for", but that's the only piece of this that you can technically violate? And the rest are just really, you know, guardrails, if you say, I mean, does that make sense? Am I making sense sort of what, what I'm going? I'm just, I'm concerned that people pick this up, and they say, I can't do anything that's on this page, end of story. And I sense that part of this is really guardrails, almost to help protect the individual from going out of bounds also.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Really, really, the policy is intended to protect the city, the council members, our elected officials, our appointed officials, and to provide some of those guardrails. As far as enforcement of those, since we do use the language recommend, recommended. Mr. Hager, would you mind weighing in on that? I honestly have...
Well, it would depend on what they did, because you could violate this policy as well as violate another section of the code of conduct. So, you could get in trouble, in your words.
Not my words.
But if, if, you know, you inadvertently did something, and someone complained about it, it may not arise to the level of being actionable under the Code of Conduct. It always has to come back to the Code of Conduct, the way it's written. It's not, there's not a separate enforcement mechanism in any of this. You can put one in if you want.
Well, just like number one here is public officials should separate, number one, under the best practices, is they should separate personal and professional media, social media accounts. So, is that a requirement, or is that just, that's really what you ought to do to...
That's really what you ought to do. It's not a violation.
And I'm just curious, if when somebody reads through this, is that how they perceive it? Or do they perceive it as, I gotta, I can't, I have to have separate accounts and things like that? So, I mean...
You, you can change it to say, you know, requirements versus best practices, and delineate it that way in the understanding of it. If you don't have a separate media account from your political account from your city account, and you get in trouble, then you get in trouble. But if you don't do that, I'm not, I don't think it's violation of Code of Conduct because you don't have it. So, that, to me, is a best practice. If you, if you post untrue information, knowing that it's untrue, that's different. That, that, to me, is more in the realm of, that's Code of Conduct issue, that you're promulgating false information in your official positions, council. I'm just making stuff up. So...
Also a violation of Code of Conduct.
I was doing it to be hostile, offering it, including the veracity of misinformation of the following. So... So, I think that, you know, if you need further guidance in the power... So I think that, you know, if you need further guidance in the policy, then you can have, they say, the best practices violation, which would not constitute a violation of code of conduct. So you can do that.
So.
John?
So, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where we're trying to get to, but I, from what I'm reading, just about all of it is actually covered by the code of conduct, that's for the council members, that talks about the, I guess, some of the information that we get, that our confidential, we can't disclose, and so on, so on, so, so, and I'm not, I'm just not sure if this is something that's really necessary, and a lot of the other, other cities are not really keen on this, having this additional policy, so, I'm just not sure about adding additional thing that's not really necessary at this point.
So, and I will ask, is the purpose of this to specifically get social media, like specifically defined in the code of conduct? Like, you know, like, you know, John's obviously, you know, saying that what he's seeing, it already includes it, but is, is the idea to specifically outline behaviors and things on social media, is that the purpose of this? I just want to make sure I, I understand the scope and the reason why.
Correct, yeah, yeah, it really is to kind of firm up some of those, the rules around social media, or the best practices and guidelines around social media. Because social media is, you say it's new, but in the past decade or so, you know, not all of the, the laws and regulations and government has stepped up with that. So this is one way to kind of help make sure that we are maintaining the, aligned with the Public Information Act. And it really also goes into talking about record retention, and how to maintain social media records. So there are specific things in the policy related to social media that are not necessarily covered in the code of conduct. And so those are really intended to focus specifically on social media.
Thank you.
Bijou?
Yeah, so the existing code of conduct applies to appointed board members and commissioners, right?
Yes.
And elected officials, and city employees.
I thought city employees had a separate social media policy.
Oh, social media or code of conduct?
Code of conduct, now, since you mentioned social media.
We, we do have.
Employees have a separate social media policy, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so code of conduct applies to the elected officials and appointed board members. This is an addition?
Yes.
This social media policy is, is adding one more layer to that, but the consequences falls back to the code of conduct.
Correct, yes.
And like Kevin mentioned, this is strictly enforcing the social media because of using information request, I mean, open record acts, and so on, so forth. That is why really we are driving this, right? We don't have a problem today, but we are trying to apply solution.
Correct, yes.
For a problem we don't have.
We are trying to make sure that we are set up for success in the future.
Thank you.
Actually, so what John was mentioning a while ago, I'll just, I'll just voice it. I actually agree with the, the idea that it's already sort of covered in code of conduct. Now, the one thing I will sort of differ on that is, I do think it's good, and this is where I was going about guidelines versus actually something that's requirements, or something like that, is, I do think it's good to set an expectation of what are the guardrails? Especially as we, whether you get new, newly elected officials in here, or you get new board members that, you know, we fortunately or unfortunately, live in a world now where people like to share pretty much anything about their life on social media. And if they come in here not understanding, there are some best practices, or there, you can get yourself in trouble real quick, if you, you know, sort of get out of bounds on what you share. They need guardrails, they need guidelines to, to establish what some of those things are, because they may have never thought through, you know, public information requirements. So I think that is, that is good, even though some of these things are already covered in code of conduct, or would be covered in code of conduct, I think it is good to establish some of those, so. That's why I just wanted to, trying to clarify, when somebody reads through this, is like, what, you know, what are their requirements? Or just guidelines, or what, you know, what, what are they quote going to get in trouble for? I'm concerned, that's what they're first going to read, is what am I gonna, what can I not do? Or, you know, this doesn't make sense, and things like that. So I just want to make sure that when we communicate it out, it's just, it's very clear on to what, what is sort of the standard, and what is more of a guardrail, a best practice, and can keep you out of trouble also.
Bob, you're gonna have to raise your hand higher.
You have it. I'm not gonna raise this. The thing, real quick, is, it's not so much to catch anyone doing something wrong, is, we want you to understand there are consequences to all of your devices, emails that you have, become public information. And you're, you don't swim in those waters every day, so, some of us do, because of the position that we have, and we have a license from the state, and they make us do all kinds of things. But, you know, especially board members, they may be used to sending out emails to everybody in the neighborhood, or wherever those websites are. Well, it changes, once you take an oath, and once you start representing the city, things change. And we just want you to know, these are best practices, so when you get out there and you start getting criticized, and people are shooting at you from down at the die, you'll still know why. That's all, and, and it's the consequences of everything, the laptops, and your iPads, and your telephones. We want you to keep that separate, so that Daryl Noga's not asking for your iPad, so he can do an open records request search, or things like that. We don't want to do that.
But even what you just said, we want you to keep them separate, but that would not be a requirement, right?
Yeah, if you don't do it, it's.
Right, it's just more of a problem.
We know it to you, tell you, whether you follow the advice, that's up to you.
I think it's best practices.
Right, so I'm next.
The best practice.
So, I had a question that came in very vocal, and I answered it, so I want to see how close I was. I was accused, or we collectively were accused of limiting free speech. So what was, what would be your response?
Really, the, the intent of this policy is to make sure that we are aligned with the Public Information Act. And so really, this is all about helping to ensure that all of our communications are transparent, and that they are available to the community at large. So we want to make sure that communicating openly and transparently, and this is one way to help us ensure that we're doing that. So really, from my perspective, I'm trying to make sure that, that we're getting the information out there in the correct way.
I'll take my answer and yours as well, so I think we did okay. All right, we had three hands, I don't remember who was up first, Bijou? Were you not?
So, if we separate the best practice, like Don mentioned, is there any other mechanism we can incorporate that into the code of conduct, or the house rules that we have?
The, the answer is yes, I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like, that's why I was struggling, I was trying to give you a definitive answer. I don't have one for you right now. I will tell you that we have, we have many things that are considered to be standing rules, that may be unwritten, but are just considered to be best practices. And those are the, I think, I gotta hand it to Hannah for putting those at least on paper, so that you can read them and understand them. But we can, we can certainly consider whatever, Mark?
I, I just wanted to respond to Bijou, in that, that we have house rules, but every board and commission may not have house rules, I don't know exactly.
That's true.
So, but, you know, some sort of a, something that would be informative like this, because you, you know, if you, if you're gonna do it, then you've got to.
It's consistent.
Yeah.
John?
So, with what Bob has said, and I agree with Don, that, you know, it's good to have a guideline, but to that extent, I think that's good. But as far as like, policy wise, I think, again, it goes back to it's been, it's covered by the code of conduct already, most of it basically. So guideline, I, I agree that you could use that, it could be helpful, especially for even other board members as well.
Kevin?
I, I had a question, kind of going back to the, the boards and commissions. I know that when, when Don and I were, were elected, we sat through an orientation, where we went through, and, you know, we learned a lot about, you know, the processes and stuff like that. When people are board, and I would like to apologize, because I've never been on a board or a commission before, because I went a different route, but do people go through an orientation, and are they presented all of, like, the, the code of conduct? And, you know, if this is adopted, go through that, this social media policy? Just to make sure everybody is on that?
We do some, we do some with the, with the B O A, and planning and zoning, and there's one other one, I have not got, D R C, some. The rest of them, we do not.
Okay.
That is one thing that we want to be in place.
Excellent.
But she's taking care of that, she's gonna make this work, so.
So, we're, we're.
A world of lights.
So, yeah, board members, appointed board members are required to go through the Open Meetings Act training. And to provide that certificate to us within a ninety day period. I want to implement the same for the Public Information Act training.
Okay, good.
Good discussion. So what's the, what's the consensus here, what are you thinking? Do we need to make some recommendations, do we need to make some changes?
I would like to get, see separated, the best practices separated out.
With the guideline.
Everything else, yeah, it's a guideline, so everything else is covered in the code of conduct.
So, I, I understand, I, I was, I was headed that way too, but then I got to thinking that if it's a best practice, and you agree, agree-ish, help me out, Bob. Agree-ish, thank you. Violate the best practices, then it's probably a code of conduct. So I'm not, I'm not clear where that line comes. And I, I'm, I was, I've been sitting there thinking that one through, and I haven't, I don't know, I don't know how to handle that one. Kevin?
One thing I will say is, like, you know, in the, in the top part, in the professional and personal conduct standards, there is specific language about, I think, preserving information for public information requests, that, that should be a part of our standards in some way, because if you look at number six on that, officials are prohibited from deleting posts and related comments regarding any city-related matter to avoid violating. There's a piece of that, that I think that, that should be a requirement, because that's a, is a, a big part of preserving the public information, and, and so, in, in that, you know, in that piece, I think there's specifically, there are things that I think we should, you know, we should adopt, but I definitely understand what you're trying to say about.
So I've got Don first.
Just a water bottle.
But again, to kind of summarize everything, just understanding that, I, I think that what Hannah's trying to do, there are some things that, that need to be included in this, I know you guys are talking about separating out certain things, but I, I see the need for adopting this to preserve public information. That was just my point.
So I would, just to clarify, sort of what my standpoint was, I do think these first, what, nine things, or however many? I do, to me, that felt like that was the policy, that's actually the policy piece, right? And this other stuff is more of a, these are the guardrails. So I, as far as splitting things out, I guess I could see the split in those two things, and like having, does that make sense? I mean, have, here's what our policy is, and these things all maybe tie back to the code of conduct, or whatever, because there, there's nothing really in here that is in addition to the code of conduct today, right? Of the, the first nine. I mean, these are all things that would constitute, so I don't know that it's necessarily bad to have these first nine things. The professional, professional, professional conduct standards. You only have eight?
I think I'm looking at an old copy.
One was added, yes.
Probably is, in the code of conduct, some loophole, because that was written before social media, and it was written before really a lot of the nuances of the Open Meetings Act, before we had devices. There wasn't any social media before we had cell phones, and iPads, and computers. And that thing was written twenty-five years ago. So might make sense to take those nine things and amend the code of conduct, and put them in there, and then have a social media policy, it gets you in the same place.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that, does it need to be part of ordinance, if it's going to be requirement policy, or something like that?
And then that's applicable to boards and commissions, you, and.
But that's changing the ordinance.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say real quickly, first of all, no rush, right? I mean, y'all are having the deliberation, yay. Secondly, what Bob just talked about, what Hannah, and listening to y'all, what I hear is, we, we don't need to do a presentation this evening. What we need to do is go back and have us work on, I'm gonna use the term split, but that's probably not the right word, but to take policy, so that when we go to boards and commissions, they can say, this is the adopted policy of the city of Capella for boards and commissions, and how we are to conduct our business related to social media. That, those things that you said you're comfortable with. On the code of conduct, for those things, based on what Bob just said, and the input that you provided, look at the ordinance for the code of conduct, then bring that back to you, and that allows you to deliberate over the code of conduct as it relates to this issue, and at that point, you're opening up the code of conduct. So I, I think for this evening, if I hear you correctly, we don't necessarily have to have Hannah go through a whole presentation, but y'all can just table it to some future, you don't even have to establish the future date, let us work on it. Yes, you do. Okay, then pick out as far as we can.
If you choose to mayor with the consent of the council during that, you'll just ask that be removed, and we send it back to staff for further work, and we don't need to talk about it.
It's not tabled, then?
You can call it whatever you want. Tabling only matters during the meeting technically, except for P and Z matters, which, because of notice requirements or public hearings. The rest of it, with the consent of the council, under the rules, and under Robert's rules, you can remove from the agenda, and we'll go back when it's ready.
Bijou?
I'm in favor of what Mike just said.
Got it. Wish we could all be that concise. Whatever Mike said. Whatever Mike said. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will.
Thank you for all your work on it.
We're getting closer. Yes, we are getting closer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
So it is, it's after seven twenty, I don't think we're going to get through the two final items in seven minutes, so shall we adjourn from work session at seven twenty-three? And we will convene into regular session of the city council at seven thirty.
And we will convene into regular session of the City Council at 7:30. So. I've got mine, I've got mine on my phone, too. The time is 7:31 PM and we're going to convene into the regular session. As a reminder, persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance section of the meeting tonight or the public hearings must sign the appropriate registers outside the council chambers and list their residence and address. Tonight, our invocation is going to be given by Councilmember Bijou Matthew. Please stand and then we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Matthew?
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we bow our heads before you in humility. Oh Lord, thank you for giving us one more day to live in this wonderful world that you have created for humankind. We thank you for everyone who are assembled in this room and watching online to witness the discussion, debate, and making decisions. We pray for our firefighters, police, and first responders. We thank them for their commitment and dedication to keep all of us safe and secure. Thank you for many abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I pray for the various levels of the city officials and for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us the wisdom to govern for all, including disadvantaged and less privileged among us. I pray for the agenda before us today. Please give an assurance of what would be, please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Capel. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated. Item number six on our agenda is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence and address. Each speaker must state his or her name of address as their residence. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker's time may be extended by an additional two minutes with the approval of a majority of our council. Person signed up to speak will be called on in order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any council member, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break and make the request to the mayor and council if we would like to extend the speaker's time and so inform the speaker. Tonight, we have three people that have signed, excuse me, four people that have signed up to speak. First on the list is, and I'm going to apologize for my pronunciation, for all the names tonight, Amrish Patel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Amrish Patel, 313 St. Tropey Drive, South Lake, Texas, 76092.
Thank you.
Right. So, good evening and namaste to Honorable Mayor and City Council members and all the members of public present here and online. So namaste means I bow to the divine within you. We Hindus believe there is divinity in every living being and throughout the universe. My name is Amrish Patel. As I said before, I have been living in DFW metro area for more than 14 years. Capel is close to my heart because Capel is where we first bought our house, our first house in the United States, and we still own it. Both my daughters went to school in Capel while we were living here. It was while living here, we got introduced to Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh, HSS. The name literally means Hindu volunteer organization, through which our entire family learned about Hindu culture, traditions, and inculcated the value of service. I'm sure, being an Eagle Scout, Mayor, Honorable Mayor appreciates the value of service. We went to the local chapter of HSS every week at the core for many years while we were living here. My favorite activity was learning yoga and participating in annual yoga than, which HSS conducts every year in the month of January. And we are thankful to the City Council for providing proclamations for yoga than events in the past. While we talk about all positivity and happiness going along, I want to give a heads-up about some unfortunate incidents in some of the cities in DFW metro area where few individuals with malign agenda are traveling city to city across states to speak at city council meetings, spreading Hindu phobia, fear, hate, and disrupting harmony of our society. I would like to send, end by sincerely urging the cities of DFW area, including Capel, to be cognizant of such individuals and organizations that divide the society by promoting hatred against a section of people. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much for your time. Second on the list is Sheila Saghi. And you can correct my pronunciation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, as you are quite close. I'm Sheila Saghi and the address is 10305 Offshore Drive, Irving, Texas, 75063.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Capel City Council members, fellow citizens of Capel and friends. As I stated, my name is Sheila Saghi and I've been living in the Valley Ranch area for the past 16 years. My son is a senior at CHS and he's a part of the swim team. My daughter passed out of CHS playing basketball for eight years and she was in a team where she was a minority. The reason I bring this up is neither my children nor I have ever felt threatened to be a part of a minority community. This wonderful Capel community has never made us feel otherwise. I'm a volunteer at the Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh that Mr. Amrish Patel has mentioned. And this organization is basically a socio-cultural organization which upholds Hindu values such as the entire world is one family and service to humanity is service to God himself. My children have also been part of this organization through Balgokulum since their childhood and grew up practicing these values. One of their favorite festivals is Raksha Bandhan, which means bond of protection. It's a festival that commemorates the relationships in our lives as brothers and sisters of a shared community. On this universal oneness day, we reach out to various officials and community leaders to express our gratitude. I just wanted to bring to your attention to some fringe elements that have misused this kind of forum in a neighboring city. They've used such meetings to spread Hindu phobia and malign the peace-loving and service-oriented organization like HSS. I'm afraid that such attempts could create an environment of fear for the minority Hindu community.
Ma'am, your time is breached.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Sachin Chedhani.
You are quite close, yes. So my name is Sachin Chaudhary. I'm resident of 10314 Lake Bridge Road, Irving. Namaste and greetings to Mayor and Town Council members. I'm a volunteer of Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh, HSS, USA. Today, I'm here to talk about Seva Diwali. Next slide. So Seva Diwali is an initiative coordinated nationwide by Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh, HSS, a nonprofit voluntary service organization. Seva means selfless service and Diwali is a festival of light celebrated by Hindu, Jain, Sikh, and Buddhist communities throughout the world. Seva Diwali is a nationwide food drive run by all indigenous organization, local communities, businesses, and an individual. It is an opportunity to celebrate the festival as well as something to give back to the local community. We have Diwali festival coming up, which will be on November 4th next week, and this food drive will run through the November 21st. So just on the right side of this presentation, the image says the last year's nationwide statistics for Seva Diwali. Last year, nationwide, we collected 294,000 pounds of food and that has been given to 199 food pantries and shelters across the USA. 400 food collection centers have been set up and there were 179 participating organizations. This year in Dallas, we have partnership with two major beneficiaries, Metro Press Services in Farmers Branch and Farmers Market Food Pantry in Lewisville. We have so far 35 collection centers have been set up for food collection at multiple locations and 50 local communities are so far registered and they are participating. Multiple businesses, organizations, including major local grocery stores, they are running this drive. This is some of the pictures which I captured from.
Sir, you've reached your two minutes.
Just last one point, wishing everyone good health, happiness, prosperity on the occasion of Diwali. Happy Diwali. And I would like to basically give these Diwali greeting cards along with HSS annual report to the city secretary. Thank you so much.
Much for your time. Next on the list is David Mobius, Mobius, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is David Mobius. I live at 788 Crestview. I'm here tonight to represent a large number of the neighbors on my street, specifically to talk about the short-term lease or the short-term rental in the community. We recently purchased that house along with some of the other neighbors, as you've seen, houses have been up for sale quickly. And when we bought the house, we were quite surprised to discover that the house across the street was an Airbnb. And when we first got there, we were really taken back. We actually, the number of traffic and the people coming and going, we actually thought there was a drug trafficker living in the place. There would people be coming all hours of the day and night as we stayed there. As we discovered, the place was being rented by the room. There'd be at least eight different people in this location because it's a large place, the 766 address is where this is at. And that transient atmosphere made us feel very unsafe at night. We didn't know who was coming and going, all the cars parked in the street. On numerous occasions, myself and other neighbors have had to call the police for disruptions in the neighborhood, for disputes. We've actually had to call the police once because someone was dumping chemicals down the drain from a professional organization. That was dealt with as well. But this residence is being run as a boarding house. It's not a single-family home. It's not being really run as a true Airbnb. It's a boarding house and people come and go. People are staying in this place for over 12 months and I've sent video and photos and documented evidence to the city to review this information. And we tracked this for over a year now of all the things that are going on in this. The homeowner that lives there does not live there. He lives in another place in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. This may be one of his homes, but he doesn't live there. Anytime something happens and he's confronted, he doesn't, you know, I can't control it. It's, I don't have anything to do with it. And so he's, he's not responsible for what's going on.
Sir, your time has reached.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All we want to see is a positive change in how this is managed and conducted in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, item number seven is.
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. We have one gentleman in the audience that would like to speak. He just didn't get the opportunity to sign the citizens' appearance roster.
I'm sorry, I should have asked, is there anyone else that would like to have an opportunity If you could give your name and address for the record, sir.
Patrick Brandt, 163 Georgian Drive here in Capel. I urge you, deal with those issues. Don't take up item 14. There's no reason to have social media policy for the city. The United States Senate held hearings today trying to decide about students and youth social media usage and viewing and networking. They're not coming to a decision. The legislature has passed laws about social media use both by the state, by individuals. Those laws are being sued over, the governor's being sued. So there's no guiderail out there upon which you can build on that's going to allow you to do that. This is not normally a city issue, right? Yes, you've had issues with either impromptu release of information or information getting out in other ways. There's two ways to deal with this. You either create a policy, what you have there kind of looks like a policy that includes punishments but isn't written as an ordinance, so I don't quite know how to read it or how you're going to enforce it or do anything with it. Focus on that. That's in the wheelhouse of the city. Build us a lift station, focus on infrastructure, fix downtown road, but having a social media policy is a total moving target right now. There's going to be a new social media platform that's going to come along. If you look at that policy, you have recommended language you want your city employees, board members, and council members to use. That's going to change in six months. If you want to be back here doing this again every few months, I just don't think that's really the situation you want to be in as a council on these policy areas and the rest of it at this point. I think you're really looking for a situation here where the capacity to do this versus the need to do it are a real trade-off to consider. The way, as I read, the policy as it's written, there's just too many holes in it. There's too many other things to consider. What happens when, I'm not being partisan here, what happens when the Trump New Media Organization comes in? What are you going to ask people to say? Thanks.
Would you mind giving your name and record for the address?
Patrick Brandt.
And address, please.
163 Georgian.
Thank you.
Gave that at the beginning. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Owens, is there anybody else?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation and while the group is joining me downstairs, I'm going to, there's a group here that's going to participate with the proclamation for Arbor Day celebration, Isabel, Shruti, Marissa, Mara, and the BEC staff, I think. That sounds like about half the audience. Whereas Arbor Day first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas 2021 is 149th anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees beautify our community, provide habitat for wildlife, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal wherever they are planted, now therefore I West Mays Mayor, the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Arbor Day Celebration Month in this city of Capel. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees, our woodlands, and thereby promoting the well-being of the future of our generations. A witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Capel to be affixed as 26th day of October 2021. Council, for your consideration, is there a motion? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Agenda Item 7, approval of a proclamation naming the month of October Arbor Day Celebration Month and authorize the mayor to sign.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Matthew? All in favor?
Long Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. How much in carries?
Thank you very much. Now, I believe there was something that this group had to say.
I apologize. Now, good evening, everyone, respected City Council members. The Biodiversity Education Center is celebrating Arbor Day this year throughout the first two weeks of November with Arbor Day themed equal explorer visitor days and on Saturday, November 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the annual Fall Frollick.
This year at Fall Frollick, the Keep Capel Beautiful Teens are partnering with the Keep Capel.
This year at Fall Frollick, the Keep Capel Beautiful teens are partnering with the Friends of Capel Nature Park and the Biodiversity Education Center to be able to offer a fun and interactive experience for our visitors. We invite the public to migrate through the seasons with us as we discover the unique characteristics of each season at stations along the trails. There will be treats, crafts, lively grass band, and fun hands-on activities for everyone to enjoy. We welcome everyone to visit and celebrate the seasons with us.
Thank you very much. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes, I am Izzy Ordigoza. I'm a senior at CHS.
I'm Shruti Shukla. I'm also senior at CHS.
My name is Mara Reid. I'm the Biodiversity Education Center Coordinator.
I'm Marissa Levis, I'm the Community Programs Coordinator.
So I'd like to wish you success. Arbor Day is very important to the city. We spend a lot of time talking about trees up here and all the the rest that goes along with that. So here's a proclamation that we just read, and thank you very much for your volunteer, and thank you, thank you very much for what you're doing for the city. Okay, item number eight is a proclamation for the municipal courts, and I believe we have our Judge Christine Primrose and her staff to come forward.
We do.
You know, this is the one time I do enjoy seeing you.
What, I know. Right, that's right. And I don't have a robe on, you're not trouble.
Come on around. Come on around. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas municipal courts play an essential role in preserving public safety, deterring future criminal behavior, and protecting the quality of life for our area residents, and whereas more citizens encounter municipal courts than any other type of court, and the administration of justice in the municipal courts has substantial influence in shaping the public's impression of the Texas judicial system, and whereas the Capel Municipal Court Number One provides residents with a forum where questions of law and fact can be resolved regarding the alleged violations of state law and municipal ordinances, and whereas our municipal judges who pledge to be impartial and also function as magistrates for the state of Texas work diligently to ensure fair administration of justice and to enforce procedural safeguards for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and whereas the judges, court administrators, clerks, bailiffs, and prosecutors who serve the Capel Municipal Court Number One have complied with all the relevant emergency orders and implemented procedures during the COVID-19 pandemic to provide for the safety of all who work in and appear in the court. Now therefore, I West Mays Mayor of the City of Capel, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of November 1 through 5, 2021, as Municipal Court Week. We commend all those associated with Capel Municipal Court Number One for their exemplary dedication to the City of Capel. Eyewitness thereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Capel to be as fixed as 26th day of October 2021. Counsel, is there a motion? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item Number Eight, consider the approval of a proclamation naming the week of November 1 through 5, 2021, as Municipal Court Week, and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Carol. All in favor?
Long, Carol, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Judge Primrose, did you have something you would like to say?
I did, if that's okay. So, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Land, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is an important time for us. It's my favorite time to come here once a year to the municipal court. And what a, what a great city. This is crazy. When we can wear one of those things, we'll be happy, but we're going to have to figure that out. But I want to thank you. I want you all to know that our municipal court is not just surviving but thriving during this pandemic. As most of you know, when it comes to courts, it's not a choice. There's a lot of people who have to come to our courts. There are, you know, jurors, there are police officers, there's witnesses, citizens, a lot of people have to come. But this group has pulled together and done a great job. So if you don't mind, may I introduce them myself?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So one thing we have to do, there's kind of an, I don't know if a lot of you know, but we're not subject to the governor, we're subject to the Supreme Court. So sometimes, we never know when the Supreme Court's going to be issuing orders. And so we have to plan ahead of time, as you can imagine. We can't just, you know, do it right now. We have to plan ahead. We have a lot of things. We have to keep people safe. We have to keep things efficient, keep the court running. It's kind of like organizing chaos. So the first person I'd like to introduce is Maria Hernandez. She's our court coordinator, or chaos coordinator. She's done a great job. She's had to go in person, back out of person. We have a new, you know, she just came to us, what, two years ago from another city? She's my partner in the courtroom. So she has done a great job, and I just want to thank her very much. Her understudy is Daisy Torres, so she's kind of learning the court too. And Daisy is our JCM, our juvenile case manager. And we've always had a great group here and the way we handle our juveniles, but she's really got some stuff up her sleeve, so stay tuned, because the council will definitely be hearing more about that soon. And then along with her is our, we're going to go to Gretchen next, Gretchen Smith, I call her Gigi. Now, she's just our, she is our veteran clerk. She's just steady. You can count on her. She's been here longer than I have. If something needs to get done, if the court's going crazy, she's known for her customer service. She's known for her calm demeanor. She can just get it done for us. And so she's been with us a long time, and we sure appreciate it. Along with her is Elizabeth, and Elizabeth is very much our Elizabeth Adams. She is also like Gigi, she kind of keeps that front office running. She does a great job. I call her Hawkeye, because no one is going to be submitting something to the court, and everybody knows that, that's going to be wrong. She catches it, she catches things in our, in our computer system, so she really keeps a watch. Raise your hand, say I know who you are. Okay. So we appreciate her. She's been an important part of our court. Amy Bacus, a lot of people know her. She is, I call her my Jack of all trades, or I guess it would be Jackie, Jackie of all trades, or Jack and Jill, someone told me, because she is, there's no project too small, and there's no question that she cannot answer. I'm always like, Amy, how do we do this in the court? How do we do this in the city? How do we do this? And Amy's right there for us, so she's, she's always there. And of course, our marshals, how can we forget our marshals? Marshal John McArdle, he used to be with our police department, and he's the best. He's a smooth talker, he can, he can diffuse a situation. And so he, he learned that out on the streets. And so we have people, as you can imagine, who come to our court sometimes that are not that happy. But Marshal McArdle, I'll watch him. Sometimes it's attorneys, I'm sorry to say. But just recently, we had a little situation, and I was waiting to see what was going to happen, and Marshal, I didn't have to deal with it, Marshal McArdle did it. Our senior marshal, raise your hand, so everybody knows, is, everybody knows Bruce, Bruce Kier. So he is, he's unflappable. I say it all the time, and he is, he changes, there's a lot of change, and we talk about it all the time. I'm like, you're never offended by anything. I've never met anybody like that. He's never offended, he just does what he needs to do. Elizabeth Laborey, she is our court administrator. She hates when I talk, talk about this, I point her out. But you know what? She gives everybody here, she is behind the scenes always. She gives everybody their tools, she gives them encouragement, and she lets them blossom. So what that means is your court has depth. Your court has a lot of depth, because if people leave here, we have people that have been able to blossom. And then, of course, we've got our judges. We have our new judge, Judge White, y'all met her recently, and she is just a delight. She is a great, we just love what she's doing for the court. She has more experience than, than all of us, and our, our citizens have really reacted well. And then Judge Graham, of course, he is our, he's a Marine. There's nobody who I can, he would take a bullet for all of us. He is, I can count on him, he keeps me posted of what's going on. But what I'm here to tell you is your municipal court is in good shape, you have depth, we love being here, we love the city, and if we can just win one of those big discs down there one day, we'll be happy.
Here's a little proclamation for you, and from, from the, from the city, from the council, thank you very much. You know, as we look to where we want to be in the future as a city, the court embodies that, because, you know, you said it, people that come before you probably aren't in the best frame of mind.
Some.
And, you know, really, the, the attitude that you project out to the public is just wonderful. It's a good image for the city of Capel. It gives a positive image when it could be very negative, and, and you've just really done a great job in doing that. So thanks to everyone here. You know, we're really blessed to have you with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, Ms. Jessica Carpenter, would you please come forward? And I'll let you read the item into the record if that's necessary. And Mr. Up, well, before you do that, you need something that I stole.
So tonight, item nine is presentation of an award to the Capel Parks and Recreation Department from the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration and the National Recreation and Park Association as the recipient of the 2021 Gold Medal Award. And it is my pleasure this evening to turn it over to Ms. Carolyn McKnight-Fred. She is the chair-elect for the Board of Directors for the National Recreation and Park Association. She is an absolute icon in the field of parks and recreation, and we are fortunate enough that she is a Dallas-Fort Worth local and here to present this award to us this evening.
Before she speaks, could you please turn that around so we could see it? Because everybody was talking about that thing that was down there, and I had no idea what they were talking about. Oh, wow. Okay, now you. Thank you, Vanna.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for having me. City Manager Land, you guys have a lot to be proud of. This is a huge deal. I just need to say it right off the bat. This is a huge, huge deal. And I understand this is the first time Capel has won the medal. But I'm here on behalf of the National Parks and Recreation Association and the American Academy of Parks and Recreation. The academy is an organization of 125 practitioners and scholars, and we manage this program, and we make sure that we recognize agencies across the country who are doing outstanding work in the field of parks and recreation. The national gold medal is the most coveted award in our field, and it's an honor to be here to present it to you. I tell you, I was the director for East Baton Rouge Parks and Recreation System for eight years before moving back to Dallas, and we applied, and we were finalists for five years in a row, and we could never pull the medal. You guys made it happen. Your team is incredible. Just a little bit about what happened. I asked the question from the committee, what made Capel stand out? And, and the things that they told us was that Capel is truly representative of the best of the best. In terms of the work that they do here in this community, it's considered a Class Four. It's not a large community. We have five classes, and we have the military, armed forces. And so you all are in Class Four with the population size of 30,000 to 75,000 people. But only 70 agencies in the entire country since 1965 has received a gold medal, and that's huge. It's really tough to get, and it's one that you want to take pride in, and you want all of your community to know how awesome it is. The City of Capel demonstrated efforts in conservation. They demonstrated excellence in equality, equity, health and wellness. They made sure that they had a long-range plan that really addressed the needs of the community. You guys should be applauded for all of the outstanding work you did, because this award is rooted in, in the idea of advancing parks and recreation around the country and making sure that we advance it in an excellent way. And your team has stood up, and they have leaned forward, and they have taken this whole system to a level that it's never been before. So, great job. Great job. So the City of Capel, some of the things that they told me when I asked the question, what did they do? How did they rise above everyone else? They were considered the community of choice from the standpoint of being accredited in 2010. They have received reaccreditation, I'm told. They are also, they passed with all 140-plus standards. And the accreditation process is no easy job. It's one where, I call it a beast. I mean, it is hard, but you guys did it, and you passed with all of the standards, which is pretty unprecedented around the country. And I served as a commissioner, so I know, I reviewed a lot of agencies, and you guys are amazing. The other thing that I think that it's important for you all to know is that Capel Parks and Recreation, along with many other agencies, you, you have been responsive to your citizens. You've responded to the feedback that you've received from them. You have made sure that you provided passionate and engaged community services. You brought a dog park to this community, a biodiversity education center that we heard about this evening, an art center, and many other projects. Those are the things that makes you stand out above all the other communities in this country. And you have a city close next to you who also competed for this medal, but you guys took, took the gold home. You should be real proud of that. So the grand plaque actually, it was presented to the team in Nashville, and, and I guess it was in September, and it was a virtual hybrid conference, but in Nashville, they got the gold, and they brought the gold home. And I was so excited when I found out about it. I couldn't go because I had a little COVID scare, but I, I had to stay home. But I was so excited, and when they said, who do we want to give the medal to, present the medal? I said, I'm going. I, I live in Dallas, I'm going. So I'm excited for you. I know that your team is amazing, because in order to do something like this, you have to have really strong leadership and an amazing team. So congratulations, Capel. Good job. Keep it going. We need you, a lot of you around the country. Please join me, and let's, I think they're wanting to do a photo op or something to that effect.
If the Parks and Recreation Department could come down, please?
So while everyone's gathering, I think there's a few people up here that would like to say a few things. I got to admit, when Mike told me that you guys were headed down to Nashville, I go, oh. And he said, you know, this is a big deal, that, you know, if we win. And then he sent me this little clip back, you know, and I think it was two words, we won. And it wasn't until he got back that it started to dawn on me what had happened, so congratulations. Councilmember John, I know you were wanting to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question and a comment. What took you so long? That's the question, but the second comment is, you know, I feel guilty being up here because I know this is a process in the makings, and all the council members, past council members and mayors, the staff as well, they put a lot of efforts into it, and it just kind of shows what the effort, the amount of effort that's behind it. And all your comments actually reflects how hard they worked for it. So thank you so much for that comment.
Absolutely. I didn't say this, but to do this in COVID environment, this is amazing, simply amazing.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to congratulate the Park Board. I started my career, not a career, as a volunteer at the Park Board. Today, I'm sitting here, it makes me very proud. I also want to recognize the previous Park Board Director Brad Hunt, I mean Brad Reed, for his leadership that he provided to the City of Capel at this time. I also like to congratulate you, Jessica, for your leadership for the City of Capel or the team, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Carpenter, the whole staff, you should, you should be thrilled about this, and I know you are. The citizens of Capel ought to be thrilled. Part of the reason we live in this community is for things such as this, and the staff today, along with councils and mayors and staff from years before, the shoulders that we now stand on have all led up to this type of moment and everything. I think it is just a testament. And I think it is just a testament, a testament to the city that we have arrived at this point. I happened to be in Dallas the other day and met an individual. He, we got to talk, and he found out I was from Capella, and he said, I really don't know much about Capella, but I was out there the other day, and I was just driving around, and I noticed there was a park, and then I would drive another few blocks, and there would be another park, and then I'd drive another few blocks, and there'd be another park. And I found it ironic that that was what he remembered Capella for. He knew nothing else about Capella except that there were parks everywhere, there was green space everywhere. So where we have arrived, I think, is fabulous, and the staff, you should all be thrilled, and just congratulations to all of you.
We'll let you get around to your photo in just a moment. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This is quite an honor, you know, and I said, there's only one of these for our division? And I said, yeah, that's special. That is really special. And there's a lot of you that I have worked with since I've been on the council, and it's been a real pleasure. The first time that I realized that we really had a great park system is when I went to a big event at the square that they talk about. And I lived down there. And so the next morning, and my office is down there, so the next morning, I went to the office, and I could not believe how clean the place was. I mean, there wasn't a twig of anything that they didn't clean up. So that was my first real thought, and this has been several years ago, of how great this organization, this part of the city is. And so I am glad that now the whole United States knows how good you are. And I really appreciate it. Proud of you all.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, first of all, just congratulations. It's an amazing honor. I just kind of want to share a little bit about why the parks are just so special to me. I grew up in a small town in Mississippi that did not have a very strong park system. And when we moved to Capella in 1997, to have the ability to rollerblade on, I was 14 at the time, but rollerblading to a park where my little brother could go play at Kid Country and we could go enjoy an amazing clean park, that was transformational for me. I'd never, I'd seen communities like that only on television. And so I knew that this community was a special place at a very young age. You know, fast forward, you know, we have a business here. We chose to purchase our home right next to Andy Brown East Park because of the amazing park system. And that was a, you know, a very adult, grown-up decision we made because, and it was motivated because of our park system. It's amazing how beautiful that is, and to have that virtually in my backyard. So basically, the best-kept secrets in Capella are getting out now. Everybody knows how amazing our park system is, and we're just so happy to celebrate that. Congratulations to every staff member that is here, to staff members in past. Just, it's an amazing accomplishment, and thank you guys so much for sharing your expertise with our community. It means so much, and you guys make us look so good as a community. So thank you very much for all of your hard work.
Thank you again for coming all the way out, from Dallas, all the way out to Capella. I thought we were gonna hear that you were from Washington, DC, but...
Oh, I usually spend a little time up there, but most of my time is spent in northeast Dallas and Lake Island, so that's where my home is, and I call Dallas home, so, yeah.
Welcome to Capella. You're welcome to relocate here if you...
I think I'll check out your farmer's market. I'm told it's really neat. I gotta check it out.
All right, we'll be quiet and let you guys do your photo.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, and... No, this is just a, no, no actions required. And I do appreciate at 6:00 AM when the core staff is upright and shiny and smiling. So I'm not, I'm glad they are. So thank you very much. Item number 10, Molly, are you, can you come forward, please? And bring back up if necessary. Item number 10 is an annual update from the Capella Sustainable Food Organization.
Yes, and I'm gonna let Prasad introduce us tonight, the President of the CSFO Board.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So this year is my honor to, I'm Prasad Palumrazu. This year, it is my honor to present the annual report for Capella Sustainable Food Organization that oversees community garden and farmer's market. We have a lot of wonderful volunteers here, some are present here. Thanks to each of you for your support for the organization. I also would like to recognize Molly, Molly and Marissa for their ongoing support. Let me introduce Scott Warrington, Amanda Austin, to present the garden and market report. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. And now my favorite part of the year, used to be Thanksgiving, but now our fiscal year just ended, and I get to share with you and celebrate with our gardening community the results of all of our hard work. So without further ado, did I click this button? No. This bad boy. Okay, so this year, we donated 29,364 pounds of organic fruits and vegetables that all went to Metrocrest Food Pantry in a year when they absolutely needed it the most. As of June, that organization was serving 400 to 400 families per day out of the food pantry. So this needed fruits and vegetables went a long way to help their customers. We have three community gardens, two of which started in 1998, and the third one was added in Old Town in 2017. Since the inception of the gardens, we have donated close to 250,000 pounds of food. But more important, I think, than the actual numbers, is how many healthy, sustainable meals we are able to serve during that time period. So with that, we were able to serve close to, sorry, 25,500, or 24,000, 2,470,520 healthy meals, sorry. But we're not gonna stop there. This year, we plan to add more beds at Old Town, and we are working on plans for an orchard around the greenhouse there as well. We continue to be a mecca for volunteer hours, being outside in a space where we can socially distance, and even during the heat of everything going on, we are able to host volunteers from the school systems to get their volunteer hours, and as well as other service organizations in our community. In addition to this, we also have 12,344 volunteer hours from our gardening community, made up of roughly 127 gardening families in this community. During the ice storm, we lost most of our vegetables. But because we were able to quickly replace everything due to this greenhouse there in the bottom left, we just completed a small expansion project where we added additional shelving to do multi-tiered growing. So we increased our capacity by 67% by doing that small project. Our partnership with the school system is also incredibly strong. They donate seeds and soils to the greenhouse, and the greenhouse produces transplants for all 15 of the school garden programs. We also give back to the community. We have two annual plant sales, one in the spring and one in the fall, where we hand out seed packets, for backyard gardeners. We give out planting guides, we give out free advice, and we give out transplants that we know work well in the Dallas, in the North Texas area, well significantly below market value. So it really helps the community in that sense as well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Amanda.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Austin, and I'm the Manager of the Capella Farmer's Market, going on my seventh year, I believe, or sixth, sixth year. 2020, you know, a big year for everybody, but for the farmer's market, it was a huge year of growth. We saw just a tremendous boom of customers, and we sustained that growth in 2021, which was, we weren't sure what to expect, if everybody would go back to business as usual before the pandemic, or if they would stick with us. And overall, they stuck with us, which allowed us to increase our demand, I mean, I'm sorry, increase our supply. We added about 10 vendors and launched a new site layout, and existing vendors bumped their production significantly. Many reported they had two record-setting sales years in a row. Let me go back to this. In addition to providing food, we're also still thriving as a space for community growth. Similar to the garden, it was an outdoor space during 2020 where people felt comfortable interacting. So we continue to have an active volunteer committee, and in the past year, we saw a big increase of student involvement. So we had a lot of student groups, mostly high school-age students, but also some younger elementary-age students coming to the market to set up each week, either to sell their entrepreneurial idea or to raise money for whomever, whichever organizations they believed in. A big project for us this year was our rebranding and website update. This was largely in response to the pandemic, and lots of online grocers really upped their game when people decided to do online shopping. And we wanted to match our representation on the web with those other companies. So we're looking at Whole Foods and different brands that have popped up, like Hive Brands and Amazon Fresh. So we did an overhaul of our branding and a brand-new website, hired a professional photographer, and we added a virtual education component. Now, this education component is, A, educational, but B, has been a really exceptional marketing tool for us. So we received a grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture, and with this grant, we produced four videos. And then we also worked with the Capella Arts Center to produce 10 videos that feature our vendors and their skills. So it felt really good to have all of our hard work recognized this year. We were given the title of Best Suburban Market by D Magazine. So we didn't apply for this, and we didn't ask people to vote for this. Somebody came out and found our market and gave us some well-deserved attention. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Molly Buhanda, and I just wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge the value that this group adds from a city staff perspective. Specifically with long-term planning, these groups are contributing to Vision 2040 with perpetuating a learning environment and creating knowledge-sharing environments. They're supporting the business community in Old Town, and they're leveraging partnerships, which was clear tonight, to maximize impact. So I wanted to give them some credit for that. CISD, Capella Independent School District, currently has 15 school gardens, which are directly supported through this partnership, both by mentorship and resources. And these volunteers never stopped these programs at any point during the pandemic. So they did that because they saw the need that Metrocrest Services was experiencing and the community with regard for nutritious food and access to that. So lastly, the gold medal application that we put together this year included the good work that these folks are doing, and that definitely was a factor in our gold medal grand plaque recipient there. So I wanted to just recognize the folks that showed up today in the audience, as well as the ones supporting us from home, as well as Amanda and her leadership in the board committees, and hundreds of community gardeners that made this happen during the pandemic for us.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you to the whole group of you. This is another one of those things, just like the park systems, that Capella is known for, and I think it is wonderful somehow, like you said, that somehow they just stumbled, almost like they stumbled upon us out here, but they think, they think this is one of the best in the area. And it's just a testimony to the expectations that this community has, the dedication to fellowship, having community, as well as serving others. All those factor into the success of these programs. And we just, we thank you very much to helping put Capella on the map even more through these programs. Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo and say that I thank all of you. I know that it's not easy being up early in the morning, and also I see, even whether it's hot or cold out there, you guys are out there and constantly working. And I only had the opportunity actually to work at the Metrocrest Services at that one time. But what I saw was the number of people that came through and actually benefited from things that you have done. Every one of them really appreciate, even though they might not know exactly where it came from, you guys have touched so many lives through that services and what you're doing every single day. And not only that, but I really appreciate all of you actually bringing the next generation, younger kids out there. I see them out there all the time, and they're actually really having fun while they're serving the community without probably not even knowing who they're serving. But it's great to see that you guys are progressing. And also, farmer's market, great to see so many people you bring out every Saturday out there. You know, I think if it wasn't for that, there might not be a whole lot of reason why people go to that Old Town, but you guys bring reason for people to be out there. So thank you so much for that as well.
Thank you very much. You know, the, I think every, the words that everybody has said are really heartfelt. I know that when I go to the farmer's market, just the enthusiasm and the joy that people have being out there is just, it's very contagious, and it does my heart good to see people out there enjoying themselves and doing good things for the environment and helping other people. As Councilmember John said, Metrocrest is a huge recipient, and they, you know, really appreciate the work that all of you do for them, and you're helping so many families that aren't even seen here. It's just, it's huge for the entire community. So thank you very much. One more.
One more. I just wanted to make, also mention that, you know, keep tweeting or keep putting up Facebook posts, because if it wasn't for Scott putting up about the leaves, right, I didn't even realize. And I realized after he posted saying, oh, we're, you know, recycling those or using that composting. So every time I, you know, collect the leaves now, I drop them off over there. But if it wasn't for something like that, I wouldn't have known as well, just so. A lot of people probably don't know what they could do about those leaves. So keep, you know, putting up on Facebook posts and things like that so that people will be more aware about what you do.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you all for the work you have done. I serve, I'm the liaison for the Metrocrest from the city, and Tracy Ebank is the CEO of Metrocrest, and his staff is very appreciative of what you have done there and all the goods that you're providing to them, and they are really, really appreciative of all the work you have done for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is our consent agenda. This is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We only have two items for consideration this night. Is there any desire from the council to pull either one of these two? All right, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 11, A and B.
Neves. Second. We have a second from Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long, Carol, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 12, Mr. Collins, if you will read it into the agenda for me.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Be happy to read the caption in. Item 12, consider approval of awarding a citywide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance services contract to TD Industries, Inc., for a one-year period beginning October 1st, 2021, with the option of two additional one-year renewals for the total amount of $385,753.33, as budgeted, and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. So good evening. I'm Kent Collins, Director of Public Works. Also have Steve Shore with me, who's our Facilities Manager. I'm gonna run through a few slides here. I'm going to run through a few slides here. So this contract is to provide a contract maintenance or maintenance contract to provide all of the labor and materials necessary to maintain the HVA systems in 29 facilities within the city. It is not practical for a city the size of Capel to staff the professionals needed to maintain these types of facilities. These technicians have to be licensed and they have to be, you know, we would have to have the capacity to provide the 24/7 type service. So this contract is designed to provide that type of maintenance. It is the labor, it is the materials. We have very diverse systems across the city. The system we have here at Town Center is different, and the fire station is different than we have at the service center, for example. We have differing demands. You know, with the fire stations, we need 24-hour service. We have, you know, we have a lot of facilities that have typical business working hours. We have other cities that have, or other facilities that have after-hours needs that we need to be able to provide. And so this contract is designed to provide all those services. The contract value is, as I mentioned, $385,753.33. TDI, which is the contractor, they know our systems. They've been the maintenance contractor for the past few years. They have the experience, they have the depth, and they have the expertise to provide the services that we need when we need them. So this contract represents an increase in $111,000 and change, almost $112,000 from last year's contract, but it also covers four additional facilities, including the Arts Center, the Fire Station 4, and the Town Center HVAC, which although it was, is not new, it was under warranty last year because it was a newly-installed system, as well as the Columbarium offices. So those building additions represent about $88,500 of the additional cost. We're also adding back in the concessions buildings, which were not in service last year due to COVID. So when you add all that up, that really accounts for this increase. And I'll show some ways that we have tried to contain some of the costs on the next So the increase, the $112,000, was anticipated. We had gotten this information before the budget proposal or budget preparation. It is included in the budget. If you look at our line item budgets, we have this dollar amount budgeted in our operating budget. So we anticipated these increases with the new buildings and the new facilities. And I've already mentioned that in-house maintenance is not practical for a city the size of Capel and with our diverse needs. A little bit on cost containment. We do go through the proposal, we do go through the contract to try to pull out things that we can handle or maybe that aren't needed or aren't needed as often. Some examples, we removed the window unit maintenance. We have a couple of facilities that, like barns, that have window units. The cost to repair a window unit, when it's breaking, it's at a point where you just replace it. The routine maintenance, like cleaning, replacing the window unit filters, we'll do that with our staff. Those are easy maintenance things. Maintenance intervals were increased for seasonal facilities, like at the ballparks. You know, we're only using those and so we extended those from quarterly to twice per year. And then on the newer systems, we got the, going through this, we were able to account for warranty. Some of the major parts have a longer warranty on them, so we were able to kind of piece those out and zero in on those pieces. So with that presentation and that background, Public Works Department recommends approval of this citywide HVAC maintenance contract with TDI, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collins, thank you for the presentation. One of the question I had was, I noticed on the, I guess, the contract, there's the special exceptions. It talks about exception of heat exchangers, which includes gas furnace, boiler, chiller, et cetera. So is this contract only for the air conditioning unit or how do, do we have a separate contract for the heater unit or?
No, and I apologize. I should have meant to cover that. So it does cover heating. The heat exchanger is a particular part within the heating system. It's basically the box where the flame comes up, heats up, and then air blows around that box to create the warmer air. So it does cover the heaters, it just doesn't cover the heat exchanger. And Steve can speak more to this if you need him to, but basically, when, at the point that they wear out, they don't get fixed, they get replaced. And so we don't include that because they don't wear out often. The other thing is, you know, if they fail, it's due to a lot of corrosion, due to the, you have the heat combined with the moisture, so it's just, it's something that we wouldn't include in a contract like this.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, I realize that it gives us flexibility to be able to cancel within 30 days, but that also, I guess that works both ways, that they could also do that. So I'm just a little concerned in the sense that the price that they're giving us is not really something that we could renew at the same price for the next two additional options. Is that correct?
And that's possible. And any of our contracts have cancellation clauses. I would say, you know, any of these contractors that we work with, they put a lot of effort and time and they want these contracts. So, you know, it's a, we view that as a bit of a partnership. If they're bidding, we expect they really want the work. So, you know, they would not, we would not expect them to cancel, use the 30-day clause unless something was really going wrong, in which case we'd probably be right there with them that we need to cancel this contract. In terms of the renewal, we will get a 90-day notice from them that they do or don't want to renew, or they want to renew with cost increases. And it, so let's just say, you know, say they came to us hypothetically and said, we need a 3% increase, right? Well, maybe that's reasonable. Maybe the market has gone up 5% and 3% is reasonable. That's an evaluation that we would make and, you know, before we would bring that back to you for award. Or maybe we say, you know what, we're just going to take our chances. So we will get that notice 90 days before the end of the contract, so we'll have enough time, if we decide we want to go out to the market, that we can actually do that and not have the contract lapse before we have somebody selected.
Okay. And the last question is, I don't know what it entails in terms of getting the, I guess, proposal for, instead of rather than renewing just automatically with the, whatever it is that we have with such as TDI.
Right.
Is that a, something that we would normally, at what point would we just go ahead and try to get some bid to see whether we are, that renewal is competitive as to the new bids?
Yeah. So, and we're always watching the market, we're looking at, you know, material increases. You know, I was reading a report that HVA systems have gone up, the pricing on materials and labor, you know, anywhere from 3% to 9%, just over the last year. So that's something we would look at, we would look at the market on an annual basis. And if we can get the same pricing and the market has gone up, then this gives us some cost, you know, a little bit of assurance that, you know, we've at least got a good basis for pricing. It helps us in budgeting because these vendors, they know the market as well. TDI, I mean, they're big in the market, obviously, so they're a good source of information. So we take all that and we evaluate, you know, and, you know, and we work with these guys on a daily basis. So if, you know, if they say, look, we can't, we can't do this contract next year, or we look at and say, look, the prices have dropped, we need to go back out to the market. But if it's stable and they're doing a good job and the pricing really hasn't moved much, we would probably renew under the contract until point, you know, some point where those conditions don't exist. For this contract, we would have the option to renew two more times. Doesn't mean we will, but it's something that we have the option to do for two more times. And if we got to that point, and it is about a 60- to 90-day process for us, you know, we'd have to put together the specs, identify the performance expectations, advertise it, you know, so we would advertise it in the newspaper, we would advertise it on BidSync, which is our online portal for bids. We would have a pre-bid conference, we would answer a bunch of questions. There's usually a timeframe in there where we can, you know, make modifications to the bid documents or contract or refine those. And then we would open, receive the bids, open the bids, and bring it to council. Usually that's about a two-month, you know, plus process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Nevils.
I move that we consider agenda item 12 and award the contract.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll, is there any other further discussion? All in favor?
Long, Carroll, Nevils, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collins, you're still up.
I am. Two more of these tonight. You've probably seen too much of me tonight. So item number 13, I will read it, if that's okay. Consider approval of awarding bid number Q-0821-01 Village Parkway Pump Station standby generator to Clark Electric, Inc., in the amount of $1,702,832 for the supply and installation of new standby electric generator funded through bond proceeds and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. Again, Kent Collins, Director of Public Works. I have Kumar Gali with me as well. He is Assistant Director over Operations and he is the project manager for this project as well. So, as I mentioned, this is to award a contract to install a permanent backup generator at Village Parkway Pump Station. The SB 3 in the last legislature requires that all water systems like ours have demonstrated emergency preparedness plan and a permanent backup generator for Village Parkway is part of our plan. We, at Village Parkway, go to the next slide, we have two electric feeds from Encore. One comes down Sandy Lake, one comes down MacArthur. And if you remember back, well, everybody remembers back the winter storm, we'll never forget that. We were, there were times when we lost both feeds. And currently, we have a small portable, I say small, it's a Generac, it's trailer-mounted. It would be large if it was my house, but for what we do, it's a small portable generator. It's manually operated, it's manually switched, so when we would lose both feeds, our guys would have to run out there, start up the generator, get everything switched over, feed it, and it only, that portable generator only will run our two small pumps. So we have four large pumps, two small pumps. During peak demand, we can't supply enough water with just the two small pumps. So the intent of this permanent backup generator is that it would run all four of our large pumps, which allow us to supply enough water at at least 20 PSI. If it drops below 20 PSI, that's considered de-watering the system. That's when a lot of cities had to issue boil water notices, that's when the pressure drops. So to maintain the pressure, maintain the water in our system during peak demands, we need the four pumps to do that. We need the larger, the larger permanent emergency generator. And we've been talking about this generator from, since way before the winter storm hit. We've been talking about this for several years. We've sold bonds for this project, so it is bond-funded. So just a couple other things. You know, one of the things that this small generator does, it has a small fuel tank and it's diesel, it's diesel fuel. So about every six hours, when it's running continuously, we have to have a way to refuel that. Again, remember the winter storm, we didn't really have a good source, so we're running around with kind of a hand, homemade, or not homemade, our guys made it. It was a fuel trailer running around refueling all of our generators. And here, when this is running and all of our residents needed to maintain water, you know, they're coming back by here every six hours or so trying to keep this thing filled. It's not climate-controlled, the existing portable generator. The new generator would be in an enclosure, so it would have some, it wouldn't be climate-controlled, but it would be protected from the elements. I've talked about some of this already. This would be a permanent automatic transfer standby generator, meaning if we lose power from both feeds, it'll kick on automatically. We don't have to run out there and switch it on. There's a lot of electronics behind this that are way beyond me. That's why we've had our, you know, consultants designing this for us. Gupta Associates, they do a lot of this type of design work, that's their expertise. So the proposed generator would provide the emergency power to the four larger pumps for 24 hours without refueling. So it gives us a solid day without refueling, allows us to pump water. And again, it meets the requirements of the 22, the TCEQ-EPP requirements. We did bid this out. We received two qualified bids. The submittals were $1,702,832 and $1,844,469. Pretty tight spread there. Clark Electric, Inc. was the lowest bidder. They do these types of projects. If you look at their references, it's these types of projects all over the place. Gupta is familiar with them, they've worked with them on other projects. They recommended award to Clark Electric. Construction schedule is estimated to be about 12 to 18 months. And again, as I mentioned, the funding source is bond proceeds. I guess I should also mention, the lowest bidder was 20% less than our engineer's estimate. So our engineer was not the lowest bidder, and, which we like. So with that, I conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Neville.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate it. Something I just wanted to kind of point out, you did mention in the presentation that this is not a knee-jerk reaction to the winter storm. Could you give us a little background about how long you've been planning this project, just so everybody kind of understands that?
Yeah, this has been in our CIP for years. And we've, you know, I think we sold bonds a year or two ago and didn't sell enough, and so we were still working on design. We kind of knew that what we had planned was not enough, and so we added more. So we've been working on this for a few years, probably four or five years, as a project, and started design about a year ago. We're now at the point where we can award it.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collins, you actually hit on one of the things I was curious about. You said the estimate originally was $2.2 million and the contract actually came in half, basically half a million dollars under that. So just out of curiosity, do you, what would have led to that delta? I actually might have thought it might have been the opposite with material costs and everything else as of late, so why such a 20% haircut, basically?
I don't know if we've heard from our consultant, if, do you know? Do you have an answer?
You have Gupta Associates with us.
You already come up there.
Sure.
Yes, please come forward so we can hear.
I'll step aside, get plenty of distance.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So when we did that estimate, we did consider the, all the material costs that has gone up. We did, we considered the overall, the price increase for the copper, everything, but we usually do a conservative estimate whenever we do an estimation for a project, just so, like, we do not, we try to always go a little more than what the contractor would. would come up with his bid amount, just so, because we consider the contingencies, the overhead and profit, so, just, we try to be conservative with those numbers. We try, just to give a good estimate, so, but yeah, we were glad that it came up, came below what we
So are we.
We estimated, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that this is the first time putting this generator, the 24-hour generator, but do you know, do you have an idea as to what the lifespan of something like this is, considering that it might, it's not going to be on all the time, and what the warranty, if there is one, what that entails?
Well, the warranty would be two years, so we would then maintain this as we go forward. I would expect, I don't know if we have an expected lifetime, 20 years, 30 years, you know, depending on how it's maintained, yeah.
25 years?
Twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you.
The fact that it's in an enclosure and protected from the elements will certainly contribute to that.
The installation time at 12 to 18 months, what's the driving factor there?
I think it's lead time on equipment, is what I'm hearing.
I was guessing that, but I wanted to hear it.
And I didn't mention this in my presentation, council's aware, we're working on our water system redundancy project. This isn't necessarily part of that redundancy project, but Gupta and our consultant, BGE, on that project have coordinated to make sure this works with our overall, all of the changes that we're working on at Village Parkway.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? I will entertain a motion for item number 13. Councilmember Carroll.
I move to approve item number 13.
Have a second from Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Number 14, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor and counsel, item number 14, if you please, consider approval of awarding bid number Q-0921-01 Sandy Lake Lift Station and System Improvements to Felix Construction in the amount of $6,466,574 for the reconstruction of the Sandy Lake Lift Station, funded through bond proceeds and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Again, Kent Collins, Director of Public Works. Again, Kumar Gali, Assistant Director over Operations, is the project manager and is available to help me answer questions if needed. So, rebuilding Sandy Lake Lift Station, another project that we've been talking about for quite a while. As you've heard in the past, Sandy Lake Lift Station was originally constructed in the mid-1970s. It's almost as old as I am, so, for whatever that's worth. We have made improvements to the lift station through the years, probably most recently, major improvements back in 2004. That was when we rebuilt the DeForest Lift Station and created a bypass around Sandy Lake Lift Station. We'd made some improvements to the electronics, some of the pumping, and that extended the life of Sandy Lake Lift Station, but it is now, you know, 45-plus years old, and it has exceeded and extended past its useful life. There is no way that if we, nobody would design the lift station the way this is designed today. First of all, its critical elements sit with, below the 100-year water surface elevation, so it's in the floodplain, and we've accounted for that. We've got some berming that we built, really in an emergency, around that, for those of you who remember the 2015 flooding. The bottom photo shows about three feet of water around it and rising to within just a few inches of breaching the berm that was built and potentially putting Sandy Lake Lift Station out of service. It uses a wet-dry well, and, which means that for maintenance of the pumps, our folks have to use confined space ventilation, crawl down, climb down 25 feet to maintain the pumps. It is a safety issue, again, we would not design a lift station like this today. Doesn't meet the current design standards for our discharge, so we get settlement in the downstream and the force main. We're solving and will address all of these issues with the proposed reconstruction of Sandy Lake Lift Station. Preliminary design was completed by Plumber and Associates in 2018, and then they were awarded the final design. That was awarded in February of 2020, completed the design. It has been bid, and we're here tonight to, for your consideration of approval. I've talked a little bit about this, the new lift station, and I should say, so this is a graphic that depicts what we're going to be building. The location and the scale, this is not a two-scale, it's not going to, we're not going to be building this right along the edge of our property, so it's really for illustration, just to highlight what's there today and what we will be building. So, the existing station is in light blue. The existing portable generator, the backup generator for this lift station is shown there as well. Again, another trailer portable generator. The new lift station would be a wet pit configuration with submersible pumps, which means that we can lift them out of the lift station to maintain them, to work on them. We won't have to crawl down in the wet well. New structures, all of the equipment will be placed above the 100-year water surface elevation. We will be installing a new permanent generator, so that if we lose power at this lift station, it will automatically switch on. We're also including in this project some upgrades to our SCADA system, which is our remote monitoring of our water in our sewer system. So, at any point, we'll know what are the demands, what's happening at the lift station, what are, you know, what's the metered flow leaving. If you're not aware, we don't treat our own wastewater, we pump it to Trinity River Authority, they treat it for us. So, this is one of our two lift stations. New instrumentation and monitoring, as I mentioned, with SCADA. It is, we do have a two-year warranty as part of this contract for labor and materials, and once the new station and all the equipment is installed and it's ready, so the existing station will continue in operation while we construct the new station. Once it is ready to go into operation, we'll connect it, turn it on, and then we'll demolish the old station afterwards, so we won't be without this lift station. We had seven qualifying bids, ranging from $6 million and roughly $6.5 million up to $8.2 million. With seven bids, that's a pretty reasonable spread. Felix Construction was the low bidder, have checked their references. Construction schedule is estimated to be at 18 months, again, and this is funded through bond proceeds. And we recommend approval of this contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't want to be the alarmist, but could you, we all lived through the flooding of 2015. Had we not had the berm with two inches of margin, what would have been the outcome of that event?
Well, so what happens is, there's basically a level where pumps kick on, so sanitary sewer ideally runs through gravity, right? But because of topography, at some points, you just get a low point in the system and you install a lift station, and it's, you know, I call it a lift station, it's basically a pump station for sewer, right? So, the well will fill to a level, and the pumps will kick on and push the sewer through a force main to a point where it can gravity again. You know, without the ability to turn those pumps on, basically, the well will fill up in overflow at a, because it's a low point, and so that would be an overflow event, we would have to go through TCEQ, explain why it happened, why we did not have backup generation, all these things, you know, or, you know, in this case, in the case of the flooding, if it ruined the electronics, if it ruined the ability to even use a backup generator because it was submerged or submerged, even worse. So, not, yeah, it would not have been a good situation.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor, just one quick question. I know that Plumber has sent, or actually, the Felix Construction, they provided seven references, and then Plumber, the report says they only received two references as of October 18. Nothing else came back as another response from the
No, they recommended, they've worked with Felix Construction on other projects, so they were comfortable recommending them based on their experience and the references they had.
With the two references they had, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, on the, there was the opinion of probable construction cost that was basically $5.9 million, just, when, and I noticed that the final, the low bid was $6.4 million. When was that probable, the cost of construction given? I guess the timeline from when that was, I'm just kind of curious if that was just because of increase in materials and things like that, if that's what was accounting for that?
We usually get the engineer's opinion right before it's bid.
Okay.
Yeah, so once 100% plans are produced.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion on item number 14. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 14.
Councilmember Matthew, all in favor?
Long, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He can stay for 15 if he wants to. Item number 15 is consider approval of Capel, the City of Capel's elected and appointed official social media policy. We had an extensive discussion on this in work session today. In all honesty, the council is not prepared to discuss this item tonight. We are asked our staff to go back and take another look and revise the policy. We fully expect to have further discussion on it at a future date, so therefore, I will entertain a motion to postpone this item to a future date. Councilmember Neves.
I move that we postpone Agenda Item number 15.
To a future date?
To a future date.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Long, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Long, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Very much. Item number 16 is the city manager report.
Mayor, to help the evening along, I have nothing to report.
Item number 17, well, I'm going to make up for it, because mine is quite lengthy. On November 1st, we will be having a joint meeting with the Capel City Council and the Capel Independent School District Board of Trustees. We'll be meeting at the Capel Arts Center in the main auditorium. The meeting is scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM. Then, on November 4th, Thursday, we will have a town hall meeting with the Dallas County tax successor, John Ames, and he will be talking about what he does, what his department does, and what his chief appraiser does. This is scheduled to be at the Cosby Library and Community Commons at 6:30 PM, and the public is invited to come and ask questions and listen in. Then, on November 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, we'll have Sunset Socials, a date night in the park at Andy Brown East. The, there's going to be a, it's a grown-up date night, and we'll be having a late-night showing of the Princess Bride. Dinner is going to be available for purchase as well as adult beverages. The first 100 couples will receive a free picnic blanket. On November 8th, Monday, here in the city council chamber, starting at 7:00 PM, we'll have the president and CEO of ERCOT, that's Brad Jones, will be coming and talking about the winter freeze event. He's going to be talking about what his department, what his agency is doing to mitigate that for, in the future, and how they're trying to work together. He will be here to give a presentation as well as answer questions, so if you got just a little bit cold back in February, please come and talk with Mr. Jones. Let's see, the City of Capel will once again sponsor the special holiday program called Make a Child Smile. You may stop by the city manager's office between November 1st and 30th to select a paper ornament, or visit makeachildsmilecapel.com online, and you can select a virtual ornament then. The goal is to provide at least one toy and one article of clothing for each child. City staff will deliver the gifts prior to Christmas. Armaments are available for checkout Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. In addition, the city's also collecting $50 Walmart gift cards for donations to local seniors. These gift cards will be given to Metrocrest Services to build wish baskets, and these donations should be dropped off at the city manager's office by 5:00 PM, Monday, December 4th. Contact Crystal Patinas at the city manager's office for any questions. That is the end of the mayor reports. Item number 18, council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action deliberate, or action or deliberation permitted. Item A is a report on Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD with Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start off with CFB ISD. On the 20th of October, they hosted their first-ever student-teacher interview day at the multipurpose facility, and the district welcomed more than 60 soon-to-be graduates from several local universities who are looking for teaching positions upon their graduation. Then, on October 7th, the board meeting that they had, the Board of Trustees accepted the resignation of Juan Renteria. The board will make an appointment of an individual to fill this vacancy, and the appointment will likely occur on December 2nd. The appointee will serve until the next trustee election, which will be held in May of 2022. If you need more information, you can go to cfbisd.edu. Recently, the Board of Trustees and the district leadership created a new employee assistance specialist position to help provide accessible and confidential mental health support to employees, ensuring that employees stay healthy and continue to be a priority for the district. Upcoming initiatives will include health and wellness events focusing on education support and helpful strategies to build resilience and healthy lifestyles. COVID cases continue to decline, and last week, the district only reported eight positive cases. So, let's move on to Lewisville ISD. Lewisville ISD was named one of the top places to work in Texas, and number one for the DFW area school districts by Forbes America's Best In-State Employers 2021 list, so congratulations to them. The district will be holding a public meeting at 7:00 PM on November 8th at the Administrative Center. The purpose is to discuss the school district's rating on the state's financial accountability The district launched its Senior Ambassador Program kickoff event, and the purpose of this program is to inform this program is to inform and involve the senior citizens of the area. Perks include badges, star cards, spa days, and vital signs at career centers. For more information or to make a spa day or vital signs appointment, email ambassador@lisd.net. The district offers free, state-funded, half-day pre-K at limited locations for eligible families of three-year-olds for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two enrollment. You can find out if you're eligible if you go to lisd.net slash pre-K. Spaces available on first-come, first-served basis, and the schools include Deegan, Indian Creek, Liberty, Pulsar, and Timber Creek. And then finally, the L. I. S. D. Council of P. T. As, Dressed to Learn, which is a clothing closet, is in need of hygiene products and clothes. If you have any that you can spare, please contact dressedtolearn@lisdpta.org, and that's it.
Thank you. Item number B is report on the Capel I. S. D. with Councilmember Kevin Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things that are going on in Capel I. S. D. One, first thing I want to talk about is on October twelfth, Capel I. S. D. started their second nine weeks, and with that, they welcomed back eighteen hundred virtual learners returning to in-person schools. So, you know, that was exciting. I talked to Superintendent Brad Hunt, and he was very excited to welcome those virtual learners back to the in-person environment. Also, let's see here, also wanted to make sure that, you know, I know parents are concerned about kids returning to in-person classes, so they welcome you to visit capelisd.com/covid-nineteenprotocols, where you can see the dashboard where you can track Covid cases. Also, news that came out yesterday from the school board is the school board has allowed to, or has voted to, end the temporary mask requirement. So today was the first day of in-person classes not having the mask mandate. So that has been lifted. Two other things, there's a record number of National Merit semifinalists from Capel I. S. D. Thirty-nine Capel High School seniors and one New Tech High at Capel senior were selected as a semifinalist. This is a record number of National Merit Scholarship finalists for C. I. S. D. They were honored on October fourth with a breakfast, and a full list of names can be found on the C. I. S. D. website. And then the last thing that Superintendent Hunt asked me to mention was talking about, C. I. S. D. is, they're in need of substitutes. They need help. So if you are willing to substitute, they actually have a super substitute bonus. So substitute teachers who work at least ten jobs per pay period receive an extra two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bonus on their paycheck. Subs who work at least fifteen jobs per pay period will receive an extra three-hundred-dollar bonus on their paycheck. And substitutes who work on Mondays and Fridays will receive an extra ten dollars to their payday. So, you know, I know those guys want those long weekends, but C. I. S. D. needs the help. And you can apply to be a substitute teacher at capelisd.com/hr. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number C is a report on the Capel seniors with Councilmember John. John.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I didn't get the second meeting with the senior citizens at the senior center, so I don't have anything to report.
Thank you very much. Item number nineteen is public service announcements concerning items of community interests with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any P. S. As? Seeing none, there was no action necessary from the executive session, so we are going to recess from regular session and reconvene into work session. We've got a couple of items to consider. I had a question for the council. Would you prefer to stay out here or go back into the work room? Okay. We got, we got a don't care, and we got one to go back. What's the, what's the will? Go back? Okay. Go back?
Yeah.
Okay. We will, we will reconvene in the workroom and in a few minutes, in three minutes, and we'll see you there.
We have recess from, from regular session. The time is nine-twenty, and we're reconvening into work session.
They're getting desserts.
Well, he raised a guy his, apparently.
I respect, I respect the time that's here.
Do you want my plate?
No. I don't know what mine is.
I haven't eaten yet either, so.
I am not giving this up. I'm sorry.
I'll give you mine, because that's my guy.
The priorities.
I was gonna say, ladies and gentlemen, but Brianna's not here. Gentlemen, we have two items left. One is a continuation of the discussion of the council code of conduct and House Rules discussion. I really, I didn't have anything further to add to that, but we didn't really finish that discussion. So did, from last time, did anybody have anything to add or need to add or want to talk about?
So.
Yes. John?
So I actually asked that the code of conduct be put back on the agenda, because I think that from last meeting, I need to clear some air and move on with this. So first of all, I just wanted to say, Councilmember Long and Carol, Councilmember Carol, Hill and Matthew, I do appreciate, I know you could have said a lot of things last meeting, but I do appreciate all of you just not saying anything, I guess, abiding by the code of conduct in a sense. So I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate Councilmember Neves reaching out, and we had a good discussion. Appreciate your time. I think that we had a better understanding in the sense, so appreciate that. And as I said, I appreciate Mike Lan for reaching out, and then also Mayor for being there as well. It's, obviously, talk about issues that I had, but I know that there are better ways that I could have gone about that. So I am disappointed in myself as to how it entailed, and so I just wanted to clear the air, and, you know, Councilmember Brianna is not here, and Smith is not here. I know she talked about elephant in the womb, but I don't want to continue with that feeling. I just want to move on, and I just want to make it where we can just move on from this point. So again, I think we had a good conversation, and there's things that we could do better, of course, myself as well. So I will try to move on with that, with that in mind. And I also wanted to say that I know it didn't come across good for the staff as well, so, you know, I want to apologize if my intention, although it might have been good, it didn't come across well. So I will keep that in mind as well moving forward. And again, this is just so that I could move on with this situation, and I don't want to have that feeling coming into the meetings, and just want to make it where we could all kind of work together and moving forward. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about this in the sense from the last meeting.
I appreciate you saying that. I personally appreciate that. I'm sure the council appreciates that. I will tell you that when you're first elected, being under the spotlight puts incredible pressure. I felt horribly pressured my first couple of years, and it makes you say things that I regretted. I still regret some of the things I said back then. And, you know, we can all work to be better. I'm in a, I'm in a new position now, and the same thing happens to me. I'm, I get malady sometimes myself, and I'm really working to control that. So I appreciate your comments, and I know that your comments apply to me as well. So from a personal standpoint.
It does.
So, Kevin?
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, after the last work session and meeting, you know, I went back and I watched the video, and obviously, I think myself and, I don't want to, I really don't want to speak for Brianna, but she was kind of in there too, and she's not here to really discuss. But I think that several of us felt that there was some tension and things like that, and we wanted to try to, try to resolve that as best we could. You know, looking back, you know, it's, I definitely look at ways that I could have handled that better, but I think it's, I think several of us are learning and growing as council members. And, you know, what I, the common thing that I saw was passion for service of this community. I think all of us want to do our best job on that. Obviously, we're learning how to work together to do that, and we're all trying to serve in our own ways, our own capacities, with our own individual backgrounds. So, but, you know, what that did spur is, you know, we got together and had a great conversation, and we spoke for, I mean, what, almost two hours or something?
Yeah, it was, it was a while.
But I think that really allowed us to really open up and, you know, kind of put some things out on the table that, that's gonna allow both of us, I think, to understand each other more, I think, understand where we're coming from, and it's gonna allow us to be better councilmen. And, and I really appreciate that opportunity. So, you know, it was a great conversation.
Yeah, I really thank you for reaching out, and like I said, I don't want to come in with that feeling that I had before. I just want to move on, and again, I just want to clear the air and from last meeting. I know some people are, you know, things that don't go right, people are always gonna be pointing out those kind of things, but I want to make it where we are moving forward and making it work together. So, and again, I appreciate all of you for reaching out and, you know, talking and having that time as well.
So, one of the things that I've learned as mayor that I'm supposed to do, or it's part of my job, is to keep the meeting moving. So if I get too abrupt, or if I spur you on, it's not personal, it's just what I'm supposed to be doing. Mark, I appreciate you slowing me down today.
Yeah, I didn't mean to slow the speed down. I know we had things to do, but I really...
But, well, you know.
I just want to give a review.
That's as you call it. You know, if you wouldn't sit in front of me, then I could see. No, but that's the kind of stuff, you know, there's ways to, you know, I appreciate that. We, you know, there was, we weren't done with the meeting, and I'm gonna keep moving it forward, and if you guys really want to continue the discussion, that's fine. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna push you a little bit, and it's not personal. So, anyway. Cliff?
I'm gonna push you, I know.
Anybody have any, anything else on this one? All right, let's go, let's go to item D., which is discussion regarding the council's agenda request process. We left this one on there. We weren't sure that we were close with it. You know, I've been reviewing the charter. Our charter is, is pretty thorough when it comes to setting agendas. It's basically, it gives everybody, literally, everybody a means and a method to get an agenda item put on. Doesn't mean it's gonna be done tomorrow, but it does give a limit for the city manager to get that put on the agenda. There are ways that, that he can put some, an emergency item on the agenda quickly. But I think by the process, within a couple of weeks, it's gonna happen. He's also got the ability to massage the agenda if it's gonna be too full. I mean, let's be honest, we don't want to be back here for three hours on a work session. And so he's got the ability to manage our, be our time manager, which is a good thing. So, yes, there's a little, there's a little softness to the scheduling, but there is a process for doing that. I know Bijou, this was your original question. Did you have anything specific that you needed to cover, or?
Yeah, yeah. So, let's see. We talked about adding items to the work session, which one, any council member can request.
Right.
No action needs to be done by the city staff, right?
That's correct.
Okay. What about if there is an action needs to be taken? What is the process for that?
So if, if there's an action that needs to be taken, it requires a, an opinion or a concurrence of at least four members of the city council, and then it will be taken to the, to the council, the regular session of the council for a decision.
No, no, no. So my question is, if a, if an agenda, if an agenda item is placed on work session, which requires city staff to do some research, how do you go about that?
Oh, same, basically the same way. It takes a majority opinion of the members, four people to authorize or to request that the city staff take a look at the, at the item.
Okay. So first, you propose the item to the agenda on the work session.
Mm-hmm.
Then you need four council members' approval to move forward for the city staff to do the research.
That's correct.
Okay. Then if he needs to go to the general agenda item, you also need four council members' approval.
Yes, that's correct. And we were talking earlier, we can, we could, if we wanted to make work session into a formal meeting where everything was motioned and made and approved, it's been the consensus of this council under our House rules to work in a much more informal process during work session. So when we talk about thumbs up or thumbs down, I mean, these, these are not decisions that are being recorded. There's no expenditures of funds that are being made there, but it is an action that gives the city manager approval to take further action.
Was it that same process if a citizen wants something on the agenda item on a regular session?
They can't put one on the regular session. They can, they have to come here.
Work session?
Yes.
No.
No?
That's not correct. I'm sorry.
It's not.
In the way our ordinance is set up for citizens, if they want, excuse the roosters as an example, because that's a good one. Anyway, so someone had a real interest in doing something with the roosters and trying to get the ordinance. Our ordinance that we refer back to says that the citizen, it's the same kind of schedule in terms of getting something to us, but they prepare all the information, they do the presentation to the council, and then the council, it's their presentation, so correct me if I'm wrong, it's their presentation, and then what happened was, y'all didn't take, y'all didn't give direction, you didn't do anything. You kind of sat there, and if there was a question to ask, you may have asked this a clarifying question, but there was nothing deliberation. And then if it was something that the council had an interest on doing, then you would tell me, and then we put it in work session, because I wouldn't know what it is that you wanted to do. Then from the work session, we would develop if there was an ordinance to be done or something along those lines. So the citizen... So the citizen, we've had citizens do multiple presentations.
But they just need to request?
But they have to provide any information.
Information, right.
Right, 'cause we don't, it's not our agenda item.
Right.
So if they, she provided a whole bunch of backup information, y'all remember?
I wasn't.
Yeah, okay.
But that's for the regular?
The regular session, regular agenda, right.
You're right, I'm sorry, you're right. Any resident of the city shall have the right and opportunity to submit a request, place an agenda item on the subject, which we can legally take action.
So it's, you go forward?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna say that key point right there, there's been some things that people have requested that the council doesn't take, there's, there's not a way for the council to take action on it. It's not an actual item.
But it's on the regular session?
If, I, I think there's been times where we've handled it internally because it wasn't a council action, like, you know, we, we addressed the issue, whatever the issue was, but if it was, like creating an ordinance, again, I'm gonna use the chickens, that's not for us. It's a policy decision and so that's an actionable item. The question is, do you wanna take action on it?
Yeah. The citizen's request must clearly state the nature and subject for which the council has subject matter jurisdiction.
It just seems like it's easier for citizens to put it on a regular session than for us.
Yeah, that's true, but the difference being is when they wanna do something or you wanna do something, I get called, I write the ordinance, I don't do any of that. It's up to the citizen to do it so there's no process. This is just their right to put something on the agenda. And then if you think it's worthy, then it goes back through the process and it comes back on the agenda the way every other agenda item.
I'll give you another example, uh, and a few of you may remember this, Livingwell and Cappell, they, they made a presentation, I think they wanted to have a smoking ordinance, I think, or a text, there was something about a text, right? So they made the presentation, it came to the work session and the council said, uh, we really wanna do something about non-smoking, but for sure, there wasn't something that they wanted to do on texting, but then they did ask us to go and put on our signage, don't text and drive or something along those lines, you know, that type of thing. So there was a presentation out in the council chambers, it did come back to the work session. The council said, yeah, that's not really something we wanna do, but here's something that we would like to do and that's as far as it went.
Question about the presentation, um, is that something that is like, uh, time limited, like a citizen's appearance or do they have, you know, any time requirements for their presentation or is it just kinda like, the presentations like we had tonight with the, the park award, like you just get some, a slot on the agenda?
We, we generally treat it as about 20 minutes.
Okay.
And I think that gets to reference, I don't know that, I don't know that there's anything in the ordinance, but we give reference to like in a zoning case or something along those lines, uh, so it's more, it's more of the guideline than actually something in writing.
Okay.
Before this council and I think even before the mayor was on the council, uh, there were times when things happened out in the chambers that went really long, uh, so I think they try to, hey, let's get to the point.
Bijou?
Yeah, so my email to you, Mike, I used two examples, one is the chicken example and one is the Magnolia Park example.
Right.
Uh, so Magnolia Park was group of people, one expressed their concern about the trail. We allowed them to do the presentation. The chicken was one lady who wanted to do that. How do we distinguish, what do they need to do, uh, to get their items on the agenda so they can do the presentation? What's the process look?
Oh, that, that's what we were just describing. Uh, so they contacted by ordinance, uh, they contact us and say, hey, we'd like to have something on the agenda. We provide them the document that says, here's the general information, if you will, whatever the item is, spell it out, if there's any materials, you have to provide them. If you're gonna do a presentation like PowerPoints, get them to us in advance. Uh, that, we, we don't edit, we don't, we don't do anything other than just accept whatever it is that they're going to present and we pres-, we put it in your packets and then they.
So, okay, so the follow-up goes, and that's same for individuals versus group?
It doesn't have, that's the same process. Every citizen has the same privilege.
That's your office of the government?
That's through the city secretary's office.
And if the item, I just was reading, if the item is not actionable by the council, then she will send them a formal letter back explaining that it's not actionable and that it won't be heard before the city council.
And, and let me just say, if there's something that we can handle, we try to work with them on that. If, if they, they always have the right of the two minutes, right? Every citizen has that right to do that, uh, but it's the actionable issue that is the kicker, as far as whether or not it shows up on a regular agenda or not. Thank you.
Gone.
Just clarifying, so let's take the chickens again, so let's say somebody came in.
I can see this in the paper, the chickens are back.
Dan Colder.
Right?
Uh, the chickens.
I know.
The chickens, uh, so the chickens come, they get presented and somebody wants us to allow chickens.
Right.
We, we would not take action probably at that meeting, however, it would go then to staff to, to work session.
What would happen, it would come to work session.
Well, okay, that's what I meant, I mean, staff would help us.
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't pat and say, okay, the citizen does a thing and says, we want chickens and the council goes, we want chickens.
Right.
Well, it's meaningless 'cause you have to do an ordinance.
We gotta draft an ordinance and we can just legwork the best.
So it comes back to staff.
Be discussed.
You would want them to.
But it would basically move to work session at that point to further be developed.
It would, yes, if it would, it would, if something y'all wanted to talk about, you'd tell me like, okay, I'd like to have that on the, the work session, 'cause I need to know what to do with it.
Yeah.
So the first place to do anything with it is somebody says, okay, let's have that discussion in work session. Okay, great, here's her, you know, here's that information, here's the presentation, here's our current ordinances.
Yeah.
I mean, this is what we did. Here's our coordinate, current ordinances.
Yeah, right.
Then it comes back here and you had whatever discussion that the council had in that particular discussion, um, and then you make a determination, is this something that does eventually go forward? Do we go and develop a, an ordinance or amend the ordinance? Or you know what, let's stand pat where we are and it's, that's where it stops.
Okay, well, when you say actionable, you're not meaning at that meeting though. They cannot call for, citizens can't call for.
It will not be, that's right, it won't be at that meeting.
So to Bob's, so to Bob's point, for an actionable item to be voted on, he's gotta draft the ordinance.
Right.
With all the language.
And, well, like, it, it has to be a subject matter of which you have jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, yeah.
For example, if, if someone wanted to come up and talk about, uh, right to life, we don't have jurisdiction over that. That's nothing, and that's happened.
And there's nothing crossed.
And I use that 'cause that happened a long time ago and they wanted to have a debate about it and they wanted the council, but we don't have jurisdiction over that. That's not something that we have jurisdiction over.
Right, that makes sense, okay.
That's kind of what Mike was referring to.
Got it.
Is it actionable, is it something that we need to be talking about? If they wanna talk about chickens in your backyard, yeah, we got jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
Can we talk about that?
Bijou, got your questions answered?
Yep. All right, well, yeah, long on that. I know last time when we had, when we were doing budget workshop, right, you actually had citizens appearing during workshop.
Uh-huh.
And I thought that made a lot of sense where we actually hear from the citizens about their concern, people were actually going to discussion, not after we have a discussion and then we are hearing about. Is, is that a problem if somehow we were to incorporate that or?
So incorporate a, the citizen's appearance?
If they want, if they want to talk before the work session discussion that we have, is that?
Oh, you mean like here?
You talk for the budget workshop that we added people's comments at the end?
He wants them in, he wants citizens' comments in the workshop so that he can have citizen input at the workshop level.
Before we actually have a discussion, 'cause we're having discussion and then we were hearing some of the things that we discussed and then we're having afterwards what the citizens' concerns are and so on. And I think last time at the budget session, we had some people actually speak before we actually got into discussion.
Yeah, but he, uh, that was why I added in the.
You added in the.
After, afterwards.
You added before and after.
When we put it before and after.
Right, he did it before and after, so.
So there's an opportunity to speak in advance and an opportunity to speak after y'all gone through y'all's discussion.
Right, so I, I was just wondering if, if that's a particular reason why we don't hear the citizens before we actually discuss about some of these.
Oh, you're asking about the, the regular agenda, we have citizens' comments at the beginning.
We're talking, you're talking about like in here during work?
Yeah, work session, I, I thought about, I mean, 'cause we hear citizens' appearance before the agenda items and the consent agenda items, we hear them about at that time, but the work agenda, work session items, we don't hear until we're done discussing and then they're out there making comments about something that we were discussing about.
So I guess my question, uh, my question is, or why most of the time they don't even attend the, the work sessions with us? So, I don't know, Bob?
But they are, they can attend, right?
Here's the problem, you've got things that you may wanna quote, "talk about," but you don't wanna do anything about, so now you're gonna, it's a time budget issue more than anything else because you only got two hours back here. So your work session, you're not, you have no idea who's gonna show up, so he is not gonna know what to put on your work session, 'cause I don't know who's gonna show up and who wants to talk about it for 30 minutes. The whole idea of the work session is you vet what you need to actually take action on. That's where the rubber meets the road, that's when you wanna hear from your citizens. So it's not normally done in any city that I know of in work session. It's, we don't know whether the chickens are going forward or not, so I don't need people talking about chickens.
The infamous chickens.
Yeah, so, chickens. So that, I think it's a time management issue as well and then there's no sense in them talking about something if we don't wanna do anything.
Are these chicken comments?
No.
Chicken comments.
Don?
So to, I think, well, maybe to John's point, sometimes we do have an, well, so the, this evening, we, we had a social media policy on work session and it was potentially gonna get voted on in regular session and sometimes I do wonder if there are, there is a thought that it's getting rushed, even though the fact is, we'd had three or four meetings on social media policy before that, but it still has the appearance that they're discussing it in a work session and then it immediately goes to regular session. Is that the norm that we would always do it that quickly or would it be more like you do a work session, one meeting and then the next meeting is when it would hit regular for a vote?
Previous councils actually, before me, preferred to see work session and then vote on it. They wanted to be in and out.
That, that night?
Yeah.
Okay.
About five, six years ago, there was, we, a group of us decided we'd like to make a change to that, so we requested that the city manager give us at least two weeks of warning between a work session and, and a city council meeting. So that, that has been what we've been following. The one on the social media, you're, I had the opportunity to defer that, but we've been hearing about the thing for six months. So I didn't, and there, by the way, I also checked, there had been no changes in it in, you know, several weeks, so it was, it wasn't like it was a living document. So just, anyway, that was, so no, we don't normally do that.
Okay, okay, I, I was just curious, I'm just listening to what John was saying, that's what I was thinking, maybe not have any citizens feeling they don't have the opportunity to talk between work session and regular session, which sometimes that may be a perception prob-, you know, issue that there, there has been opportunity, but it still is sometimes perceived we're rushing it through, so just, just a thought to.
Well, a good example was we talked about boards and commissions tonight. Those won't be up till.
Next time, yeah.
Next time.
Right, no, that makes sense.
I mean, we could've done it tonight, but it'll be up next time.
Yeah.
Uh, I think Kevin was next.
Don said everything I was gonna say.
He looks so disappointed.
But it was a, it was a very good comment, so well.
Was that right?
You, you crushed it, man.
But to John's point, yeah, there's no reason that a person could, could just sit in on the work session, listen to the discussion and then go out, um, during the, um, the public, you know, citizen's appearance and react and state their opinions about what was discussed. That way, um, you know, they can always do that, give us the feedback on what they've heard. That would involve them actually coming to the, to the work session, which I don't know that a lot of people wanna do, but they, but they do wanna watch, you know, they can watch it on TV as well and then come down here for student, or citizens' appearance.
If you've got a specific, you know, suggestion on what you'd like to see changed, you know?
I, I just came across on my side, I was asking questions, so.
But I think the perception point is, is really important.
'Cause they think they're not being heard, we already discussed with the, right?
So we have talked about this three or four sessions, I think.
Y'all are very deliberative.
Yes.
You're so kind.
It's a lot to think about.
So one more question, going, moving from work session, um, regular session, then retreat, how do you add items to the retreat, um, agenda items and so on and so?
We basically follow the same, I mean, well, no, we don't follow the same process because the retreat is, is really a way for the city, city to plan for the future. That, that, those are the methods that we start setting the budget. That's, in my mind, that's really the beginning of the budget process and that's why we now hold them in, in January to kickstart that. Um, I mean, so you, you know, just mentally, you have to think that that's primarily, the January one is gonna be primarily budget related. Um, we're, we're still, in fact, we're gonna have a discussions next month on, on the retreat.
Yeah, I was, just to add to that, uh, the mayor kinda talks about, okay, here's the things that we'd like to cover and, so this is our new mayor, so going back, usually, uh, what's happened is they'll say, okay, here's the things that are coming up on the agenda for the retreat, is there anything else that we wanna talk about? It's, I mean, I'm not speaking for you, other than that's what a previous mayor used to do.
Well, and I, I've certainly got some items that we're gonna have on the retreat and we'll talk about those next month, but then I'm gonna ask, you know, please let us know if you've got anything specific that you need to add.
Yeah, so fast forward from January to summertime, we had the consultants came in and had the presentation, did that. How do you add that, who's coming to do the presentation, uh, you know, all that stuff?
That, that was my call. I mean, we, you know, we, we, the, the, I'm sorry, late at night, the July date was really a post-election session for the council to come together and that was, with the runoff, it kinda delayed it a bit. But, you know, we always, after a new council is elected, we'll always have a session, just a work session where we get together to discuss how we can work better together. I've done that ever, well, since I, since I was elected and I'm sure before, you weren't here then either, so, but that's very typical.
So my three and a half years here, I have been seeing Marcel coming as the consultant. Are there any thoughts put in, um, looking at other consultants coming in?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we, we are looking at a gentleman by the name of, for those that remember Randy Pennington, the mayor asked me to reach out to Randy.
That's not on the agenda.
But putting things on the agenda, to his question, yes, he's asked me to talk to some others.
Kevin?
So to Bijou's point, um, you know, uh, do we follow the same procedure where any council member could put something on the agenda to discuss, uh, at the retreat or does it, is that something that takes, uh, you know, a, a thumbs up of four to get that discussed?
No, you can, you can, you can suggest it.
Okay. Is it basically your, like, since, you, you set the agenda for them, right?
Pretty much.
So do you kinda like suggest it, then you give the thumbs up if you want it discussed or is it something like a work session where any council member can have it put on?
If, if it's something completely out of left field, we'll probably defer it to a future work session.
Okay.
But if it's appropriate for the, for a retreat topic, then yes, it'd be put on.
Is there a, um, I'm, I'm assuming you were alluding to maybe the next meeting, you're gonna start asking for, for topics to be discussed?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, thank you.
I, I was hoping to have a very short discussion during work session next time on it.
Excellent.
Excellent.
I know we missed a joint meeting with C I S D last year, I'm looking forward to the next one. So we will have that yearly, right, Mike? Is that our plan here?
It's, it was typically done annually.
Yeah.
And, yeah, twenty twenty just was twenty twenty, and so it's our turn to host, and that's why we're at the art center.
Oh, it's our turn to host?
It's our, it's our turn to host.
And keep in mind, we also generally have a joint meeting with the park board, and with the library board, and with the planning and zoning. So none of those happened last year, and, my memory's short, and I keep forgetting, we didn't do them.
I also remember attending a leadership meeting with the board's chairman and the vice chair, and.
Mayor Hunt held a couple of those.
Yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't annual, though.
It wasn't, I remember attending those as well.
Was that for new boards?
The previous, I just, I, I remember the leadership, the boards and the vice chairs, or whatever, and then the mayor, and I guess Mayor Protem, that's probably why you attended. It just talked about the council, here's the things that we're, we're trying to do, here's the things, what can we do to help you as you lead your particular boards and commissions? It was pretty informal, but it was just more of a leadership, here's, here's what we hope, how can we help you as board chairs? What do you need, kinda thing. But it was, yeah, I think it was only a couple, there wasn't, you know, it wasn't an annual event.
All right, anything else? I appreciate the, the discussion tonight, this has been very good. Thank you very much for participating. What are we, and, no, we gotta go, I gotta go.
You gotta go back out there.
Outside the adjournment meeting. The, the time is nine fifty-five, we are adjourning from work session to reconvene into regular session to adjourn that meeting.
I've adjourning about that.
What do, what do they wanna do, listen for us to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I was waiting for a diehard to still be in the audience, but now.
Waiting to see what we were gonna do.
Yep.
Encore.
The time is nine fifty-five, we have adjourned from work session, we are reconvening into regular session of the city council. There being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at nine fifty-six.